Start the meeting.
Okay, Mayor, we're ready.
Welcome to the January 17th, 2023 Lawrence City Commission Meeting. Before we get started, we will have a few words from Sherri, our city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. If you are attending the meeting via Zoom, please ensure that you are muted, and your video is off when you are not actively participating in the meeting. This allows the active meeting participants to be seen on screen. When you are participating, please unmute and turn your video on. If you have any trouble, you can send a chat. All chats go directly to the meeting host. The city reserves the right to mute people or turn individual videos off to minimize distractions during the meeting. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast on the city's YouTube channel and cable channel 25. Excuse me. When the mayor calls for public comment, those attending in person should approach the podium to indicate they wish to speak. Those participating via Zoom should use the raise hand function to indicate they wish to speak. Please leave your virtual hand raised until you are called on. Participants will be called upon in the order they appear on the meeting host's screen. Again, please state your name before speaking, and all comments will be limited to three minutes. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. So we'll start off here with the approval of the agenda. The city commission reserves the right to amend, supplement, or reorder the agenda during the meeting. Are there any commissioners who would like to reorder the agenda? If not, ask for a motion.
Move to approve the agenda?
Second.
I got a first and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. Our second item on the agenda is a proclamation for Dagan Correnta. I believe we have somebody to speak on his behalf.
Commissioners, I'm looking for Lisa. And I can... Still in here. Good evening, Commissioners. Angela Buzzard, General Manager with MSO. And we just wanted to introduce this very important proclamation to us. Dagan Correnta has been a special friend of the department for over six years. And obviously, our community and our department were very saddened to hear of his passing on the 8th of this month. So this proclamation is a way to provide a day of remembrance for him. He has a very special place with our organization and his love of heavy equipment, which you'll hear in the proclamation, and just provides an opportunity for us to show our support. And our hearts really go out to the Correnta family during this difficult time. And we just wanted to provide an opportunity to recognize the special place that Dagan has been able to support in our solid waste division and the impact that he's had on our team.
Mayor, I'm on. This is Melissa Seeburn. I was supposed to be doing that, and for some reason, I could not get Zoom to launch or let me have access tonight. So I thank Angela for handling that for me. And I really want to thank the governing body for taking time to recognize Dagan tonight. His loss is felt deeply amongst all of our team. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas 12-year-old Dagan Correnta has been a special friend of the solid waste division for several years due to his love of all heavy equipment, but especially trash trucks. And whereas the city proclaimed on January 19th, 2017, as Dagan Correnta is a garbage man day to honor his love for our solid waste division as Dagan battled cancer. And whereas while garbage man Dagan was a little too young to drive the trucks, his positive attitude, fighting spirit, and love for others were felt by many, many in the community. And whereas the solid waste division lost its special friend and admirer on January 8th, 2023 with Dagan's passing. And whereas we honor Dagan for serving out his role as an honorary garbage man to the Lawrence community and for showing the importance of how community building and dedicated public servants make the dreams of one little boy possible. Now therefore, I, Lisa Larson, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim January 17th, 2023, as Dagan Correnta Garbage Man Day of Remembrance. And I urge all citizens of Lawrence to believe in the power of community, coming together and making a difference in the lives of others. Dagan was a very special person who touched so many lives. His legacy of kindness and bravery continues to inspire and will for many years to come. Thank you. So we'll go on to item number three, which is public comment. The public is allowed to speak on issues or items that are not scheduled for discussion on the agenda. Comments should be limited to issues and items germane to the business of the governing body. The commission will not discuss or debate these items, nor will the commission make decision on items presented during this time. Each person will be limited to three minutes. Do we have any general public comment?
Hi there. My name's Kevin Elliott. And I do know what three minutes is, and I'll respect that.
Thank you.
I would like to start off by apologizing to the commission for my act of defiance. That was on purpose, but I do not make a practice of that, and I did not mean disrespect to the commission.
Thank you.
I would like to thank the commission for listening to the public. There were, what, 31 people that spoke in favor of keeping the camp open that night? Unfortunately, it's come at a terrible cost. One of the jobs that I've taken in the community in North Lawrence is trying to keep the community engaged with the camp. That's become much more difficult with recent changes that have gone out there. What I'm going to ask the city is they keep consistent with their word to the camp, keep consistent with their word to the community, keep consistent with services to the camp, and continue to be counted upon. The city has gone back and forth on a lot of different issues lately. Keeping the camp open, funding the Nature Center, funding the Humane Society, parks and rec fees, stuff like that. All those things have a single line in common. They come from the city manager's office to the commission, and the commission has to backpedal. Let's hope we have a city manager that becomes more in tune with running the business of the city and keeping his finger on the pulse of the community. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kevin. One second.
They were saying in the back that they can't hear us.
Can you hear back there now? Okay, we can hear them back there. So we'll go ahead and go on. Thank you. Thank you for that.
My name is Alchemie Ronoke. On January 11th, the Futures Planning Committee met to discuss budget cuts to school district 497. This process has been going on for many years. This year, USD 497 is expected to make $9 million worth of cuts to our community's children's education, including closing several schools and going to a four-day school week. These measures are, of course, deeply unpopular with parents and teaching staff, and many teaching staff have left the district or the profession altogether. Our schools have been forced to make tough decisions for years. Our police, however, have not. Why is it the parents and educators are forced to sit around at tables placed in the humiliating position of debating how best to sacrifice their children's education on the altar of the market and the economy? Why don't the police have to meet and discuss what they'll give up to make for a budget shortfall? Whether they'll sell a few of their fancy patrol cars or have to cut several patrol or administrative positions? Why is it that we have to tighten our belts to educate our children, but the police is already paid for? I have a few ideas as to why. Lawrence is being gentrified. Low-income residents, disproportionately immigrants, people of color, queer people, women, and disabled people are being forced out of Lawrence by skyrocketing rent and housing prices. To force these people out, to make way for an influx of capital to build investments for the already wealthy at the expense of current residents, you need a strong police force. To enforce evictions, you need police. To harass unhoused neighbors, you need police. To protect the private property laws of the property class from the hordes of the poor masses, you need police. Police protect capital, not us. That is why they get to escape by with our $30 million budget this year while our kids pay the price. The police budget has been increasing every year. This is how the city decides to spend our tax dollars. They've made their priorities clear. Defund the police, fund our damn schools. Thank you.
Thank you for your thoughts.
Hi there. You've seen me before. You know me, curvy ears. So I'm just up here. We had a little while ago, a panel of landlords come here, and I'm just asking as a landlord that wasn't able to make...
Sir, we're going to have that discussion later on landlords.
Oh, is that...
So yeah.
Off the wait.
Or not on landlords, but on the source of income ordinance. So if you could wait for then to have a, just have a comments about that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure thing. All right.
Hi, my name's Lisa Jones, and I'm here on behalf of the Lawrence Oqahawks. And we were given notice that we would be talking about...
Ma'am?
Yes.
That's going to be discussed later in our agenda. Sorry about that. Yeah, I know we've got somebody else here to speak about that. So, thank you.
You know, as this other young gentleman referred to, you know, the study said that we have a large disparity of blacks natives being unhoused in our community.
Ma'am, what was your name? I'm sorry. I didn't catch your name.
Oh, Cheryl Wells.
Thank you.
And I've been around the situation. I actually feel like this has been going on for many years. And I just wonder how you say that the values are diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I wonder what specific positive steps are going to be used to change this reality? If there's something specific the city or the county can do to change this? And I also like to say to you, Madam Mayor, that one of our unhoused people said that, "Did I know the mayor was volunteering at the winter shelter?" And she was in fact, a very kind person. So I hope, like to say one, that you can hear a positive thing. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi. My name's Tiffany Kopp. I live at, well, stay at the support site behind Johnny's Tavern. Currently, we have no support from the city. We do not have access to support when we call and no one answers. We are no longer getting donations because they are going to the winter shelter. So that includes like food, water, stuff that we need to survive. And the only time the city shows up is to ask when we are going to move because there's talk about the people that were not part of the support site have to move or else we're going to get bulldozed, even though that we're on CDC. I believe that's what it called. It's called CDC's property. So basically, the city's property. So I don't understand why I have to move. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Tiffany.
From Lawrence Accountability, Kevin came up here and apologized for the way he talks to you guys. You won't hear that from me until you guys apologize for what you've let happen to the city. Another person spoke up here about the police budget and about the use of the police. And Stephen Watts, I didn't even know Stephen before I started coming to these meetings, had no idea who he was. But it's funny how we have the same ideas about things. But you guys have given the police so much power. And you've ceded control of your boards to the police as well. I don't know how many of you actually watched the CPRB meeting from this past Thursday, but I handed a packet to two different board members here. The citizens are supposed to be able to communicate anonymously or individually with our board members. That's what that board was in panel to do, was to bridge a gap between the citizens and the police. I handed two commissioners packets of information. Your chief of police, Rich Lockhart, demanded a copy. And when I told him I wouldn't give him a copy, and the reason I won't give Rich a copy is because he won't give me anything, not even the time of day. Rich doesn't get anything from me. They have enough of my information already from the investigations they've done on me. But he decided to tell your board that they were not allowed to review any of the information that I had given them since he hadn't been provided a copy. That makes me angry. Makes me want to cuss. What is wrong with this city that you let the chief of police dictate what the police review board is allowed to see? If a citizen wants to give it to them, what's the problem? That board is window dressing. Jane Gibson said it. You just had three more board members resign for whatever reason. You have vacancies on that board. I know Stephen Watts has applied. I've applied. You have nobody, no other single person in this city that knows more about how the complaint process at LPD is undertaken and as far as citizens go. You have nobody that has more experience with how that process has been mismanaged and worked to deny complaints. But am I ever going to get a seat at the table to show you? Or do you even want to talk about it? Because I get the impression nobody wants to hear it. Because none of, there's one person on that table, on that dais up there that actually responds to me.
Hi. Hello, Madam Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Owens. I think you probably remember me from the last time I spoke. I'm Nancy Snow. I'm a professor of philosophy at the University of Kansas with a specialty in ethics. And as you know, I am very concerned and remain quite concerned about the problem of the unhoused population here in Lawrence. Before I speak to that, however, let me just ask if you would reconsider having a three-minute time limit on people, as many people obviously cannot express themselves in that amount of time. Let me also ask if you might consider actually discussing and debating some issues with the people are here in the spirit of the accountability that you have to this community as elected representatives. That said, I have been out to the North Lawrence Shelter site any number of times to make donations, as has the previous speaker. We have been doing our best to try to keep people warm and fed during this winter. I am happy that you finally declared a state of emergency and opened the winter shelter when the temperatures dipped below zero. I am not happy that you have created conditions under which Jennifer Woolsey, your best chance and most qualified person, and yes, Mr. Owens, I'm looking at you.
Ma'am, Nancy, please talk to the commission. Thank you.
Apparently so. Apparently, we are not even able to address some other people, but must keep our eyes straight and the commission, address the commission.
Please.
Rule on our participation here. May I look in his direction, or is that forbidden?
I just would ask that you, you direct your comments towards the commission, please. Thank you.
Commissioners, as I understand it, Ms. Woolsey was excluded from meetings. She decided to take a position at another town. She had plenty of offers. She knows what she was doing. Now you have advertised for that position. You do not have a strategic plan in place that will not go forward. In the meantime, people suffer, people die. This is on your watch. I wonder, I truly do wonder, how some of you can sleep at night? I wonder this. And Commissioner Finkel, I thank you for responding to my last email. I would like a more substantive response the next time, if you think you can do that. Madam Mayor, I'm still waiting for a meeting that was promised by you. I know you're busy, but as a KU professor, I'm not exactly sitting around twiddling my thumbs. And this is something I do because I regard it as a moral imperative. I regard it as a moral imperative that you, the commissioners, and the city manager step up to the plate.
Thank you, Ms. Snow. Appreciate it. Thank you for your thoughts.
Hi, this is Chris Flowers, and I'd just like to make a quick comment. I think we should be able to address the city manager. I mean, he's like the one running this whole thing. And lately, these past few years, it seems like the commission's just a yes-man for the city's staff. So I think we should be able to address the head of staff when we're, we're basically up here to bitch about what's going wrong. So thank you.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Adams. I've been managing the support site. Came here tonight because there's been some stuff going on I'm not sure if you all know about. We've been, I am camped across the street from the support site, and now I am being told that I may have to move. Not exactly sure why when I am camped legally on CDC city property. We're not receiving hardly any donations whatsoever. They've all, I guess, been going to the winter site or the winter shelter. There hasn't been, there's only been like one Burt Nash worker that's been out since all this started with the winter shelter. There's, the last time I saw a city worker has been over a week. So how is this a support site that's not doing anything? The other, the only person, last person I seen out there was Jen, and she's not even with the city anymore. There's no police walkthroughs, no community engagement. Once again, we don't feel safe. I don't understand why the city asks us to trust them when all they're going to do is abandon us out there for the winter shelter. We've got no betting, no anything. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Any thoughts?
Jennifer Woolsey, also known as Jen. I just wanted to take this opportunity to just provide some definitions, if I could. I wanted to provide definitions on diversity, equity, inclusion. I feel like I need to provide those definitions because those don't seem to be very important training mechanisms in the city of Lawrence, especially when working with marginalized oppressed populations. So diversity refers to anything that sets one individual apart from another. So diversity is the difference between someone who is housed and someone who is unhoused. It's the presence of differences that may include race, gender, religion, sexual orientation, ethnicity, nationality, socioeconomic status, language, disability, age, or political perspective, plus all kinds of other different things. Equity. Equity is providing support based on specific needs, not based on a person or who they are or what they believe, but based on their need. It's manifested in fair access. Equal opportunity, but please do not confuse equality as equity because they are very different. Resources and an ability to thrive, thrive in an environment of respect and dignity. It's a big word. Dignity is huge. And again, I want to point... And again, I want to point out that's dignity for everyone. Inclusion. There are typically three elements of inclusion, particularly in a community. Belonging, respect, and support. There's that word again, support. Belonging is one's perception of acceptance. So a person's perception, not what other people tell them, but how they're perceiving themselves in a community and their worth and value in a community by others. Respect is the extent to which someone feels they are being treated with civility and support is the level at which one is provided the means to achieve their full potential. I want to point out, it's their potential. What they feel is their potential, not the box that we try to fit them in so that they feel more like us. A community needs these things to thrive. Every single person in a community is important. Every single person's voice should be heard. I will continue to show up, not to have my voice heard, but to have others' voices heard. I asked for training. I would think that in Lawrence, I would have received that training. Unfortunately, no one does. Thank you.
Any other general public comment on items that aren't on the agenda? Okay, we'll move over to Zoom.
Michelle Watley?
Yes, Michelle Watley. Are you all able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, that works. Mayor Larson and City of Lawrence Commissioners, thank you so much for providing the virtual platform for me to make public comments today. My name is Michelle Watley. I am the founder of Shirley's Kitchen Cabinet. We're a nonpartisan nonprofit named for Shirley Chisholm, the first black woman to run for president on a major party ticket. We work to amplify the voices and power of black women so they can be better advocates on behalf of the issues that matter to them. Issues such as economic prosperity, health and vitality, education, and eradication of violence. Today, I'm giving public comment to encourage you to explore the possibility of introducing and possibly passing the Crown Act. It is an act aimed at strengthening anti-discrimination laws so that black women, black people, and people of color have greater access to economic prosperity, education, public accommodations, and the like. The Crown Act, which is an acronym for Creating a Respectful Open World for Natural Hair, strengthens anti-discrimination laws by defining race and other indicators of race and including hair textures and hairstyles in that definition. I'm sure you all have seen the stories time and time again of kids who have not been allowed to graduate because they wear their hair in natural hairstyles, women who are not allowed to have jobs because of how they wear their hair. These cases have happened right here in Kansas and in Missouri. And women and men, black women and men, wearing natural hairstyles should not be prohibited from public accommodations, jobs, any other opportunities that other members of the Lawrence community are privy to. Natural hairstyles, such as the one I'm wearing today, such as the hairstyle worn by your commissioner, the first black woman to serve on the commissioner, Amber Sellers, styles that might have been worn by Commissioner Littlejohn, if he ever had a lot of hair. These are styles, I'm assuming you have, I'm going to give you that. These are styles that are, again, styles that are showcasing our God-given hair texture and do not prohibit us from showing up in a workplace or showing up in schools. Shirley's KC has worked with a number of municipalities to pass this legislation. We worked with the city of Kansas City directly to pass the Crown Act, making the city of Kansas City the second city in the nation to pass this historic legislation. This legislation has been passed in over 40 cities across the nation in 19 states, including Alaska, Tennessee, New Mexico, and Nebraska. And if Nebraska can pass it, and Alaska can pass it, I'm sure that the city of Lawrence would at least be willing to give it a consideration, a hearing, and possibly pass it. With that, I conclude my remarks. We are happy to serve as a partner.
Thank you very much, Ms. Watley. Appreciate your comments. Appreciate it. Any other public comment, general public comment on the, on Zoom?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Then we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered under one motion approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be, will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Members of the public wishing to speak on an item that has been pulled off the consent agenda will be limited to three minutes for comments. Is there any commissioner that would like to pull anything off the consent agenda?
Yes, I'd like to pull D3A as an apple.
Okay, any other commissioners? Anybody from the audience like to see something pulled off the consent agenda? Okay, anybody on Zoom? Okay, we'll bring it back to the commission then.
Move for approval of the consent agenda, with the exception of D3A.
Second.
Okay, have a first and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
No, passes five to zero. Okay, I have a D3A.
Yes, I had a quick, I just wanted to get some clarifying information in regards to our appointments. I noticed that all commissioners do have access to receive applications for individuals who have submitted applications for potential to be appointed to boards and commissions. And I know we've had some healthy discussion in the last month in regards to appointments and philosophy, ideology, bureaucracy of it. And so I wanted to, in regards to the Affordable Housing Advisory Board, I do remember seeing an application being submitted for Nicholas Ward for Ahab. I don't remember seeing one for Phil Engelhardt, and I just needed some clarifying information on whether or not Mr. Engelhardt had submitted an application. I just didn't see it.
Yeah, he did. It was in, it was a couple of years ago, though. It was an older application. And I spoke with him personally about it. And I've had interactions with him on other issues, and so I chose him for that position.
So as far as appointments, just for my edification, because I don't think I got that in orientation training, as long as there is a application in the queue, it remains active? Okay.
Set, yeah. Sherry?
One question.
Yeah, we don't, we don't remove those if somebody applies because sometimes it can be, you know, a couple of years before a position comes available. So we don't clear those applications out of those lists. People will also rate the boards that they may want to serve on, so that is not our practice to, to take those out. So the entire list is there.
Okay. So I've identified kind of a chink in the system where I understand that the mayor takes the lead in going through appointments, and it comes to the commission as a consent agenda for us to discuss, or at least to agree upon. I think with us having access to iCompass and not knowing about appointments until the day of and not, now knowing that bit of information, that'll change the way I process and review this aspect of my role. But I just have some concerns in regards to just how we keep not making up the process as we go. The process is not very clear and concise. And so can't say I'm really new. I've been here for a year and been the second year of my position. But I just, I just have some concerns about that in our overall process and in boards and commission appointments. So knowing that Mr. Engelhardt did submit an application, I didn't have the opportunity to, to review it. I may abstain from voting, but it's not anything personal against Mr. Engelhardt. It's just not being able to fully comply with the process of the system. So that is all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions from any commissioners on that?
I would just say, Mayor, if I may, that, yeah, sometimes people have applied for things several years ago. And you do need, as you did, contact them and see if their situation has changed. Often people have gained interest in a different board or have moved on even to another city. Often we have a lot of subject matter experts, particularly from KU, but sometimes they move on or even Haskell. Sometimes they move on to other places. So as long as there's, I think, a personal interview or a real discussion with the person about the expectations, that's really important. Again, maybe something you don't know about, since that's not part of our orientation, as you say. Not to just appoint names.
Right.
Because that's hard to, hard to know, even from the application. As much about a person, if you can interview them, talk to them, understand what, what their interests and motivations are is really helpful. So I appreciate that you did that in this case, although I do know Mr. Engelhardt is a close watcher, especially of our bottom line. And again, why I, I might appreciate his perspective on that board.
Thanks. And I appreciate that, Commissioner Schipley. I think for me, it goes back to systems and, and understanding the process because it seems like that process is not followed repetitiously in a way that it seems like there's equity in, in how individuals are appointed. And I don't want us to go into time about this. If I'd be, you know, the mayor wants to speak to me about my concerns on it, I'd be more than happy to share those concerns with you. But I think there's been some opportunities where I've received emails from constituents who have missed, I say missed, an opportunity to serve on a board, who have applied to serve on a board, but yet never received communications and watched others be appointed to boards without any communication from the presiding officer who has that initial authority. So I just want to make sure that we have a consistent equitable process that not only we know as a governing body is being followed, but also the community knows and that we're following it on their behalf.
That, that's actually a great point. We don't have a system, Mayor, I'm sure you'll know, where we tell people who have applied that the position's been filled. We just don't have a, as far as I know, we've just never had a system for that. That could be something we would want to think about. I've, I've heard that as well from a couple of people not, not realizing that the position was filled. It kind of depends on the board, how popular or how or the perception of, of the power of that board, so to say, whether people are watching that or whether they just apply and wait. So that could be something we could think about, having our communications team have a response if a position is filled. I didn't personally have the time as the mayor to gin up a response to all the people who applied to boards. But that maybe if you agree, there might be, as Commissioner Sellers points out, a good communication point to people who are gracious and generous enough to apply to our boards.
Of course, or at least suggested to the committee on committees to.
Make that part of their discussion.
Yeah. Yeah. So let's not take them out of the equation since they are looking at the overarching aspect of our.
Great point.
Formation of our board. So I think if, giving that to them as a discussion point to get their thoughts on it would be even more helpful.
Okay. Well, I can tell you this, from my last time as mayor, as well as this time, what I do on appointments is I speak to every person that I am considering a nomination for, either whether it's a reappointment or an appointment, I always have a discussion of some sort with them to kind of determine what their thought process is for wanting to apply for this and what they hope to accomplish. And that's been my stance before I've been on this time, as well as what I'm doing now. So. All right, any other, no questions from the commission? How about from the audience? Is there any comments on this item? Come on up, you can come on up, Nancy. Yeah. Yes, you are. This is a whole new subject.
Cool. Thank you. I'm going to be, of course, do I have three minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
Wow. Wow. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Hurd, for bringing this to the public's attention. I'm sorry, Commissioner Sellers.
For bring. I was like, I thought I got married in it now.
No, no, for bringing this to the public's attention. This is a procedural nightmare, and you need to straighten it out. You do need to straighten it out. You have responsibilities here. There should be something in orientation about this and about how it's handled. If people want to participate on committees to help the city, everybody needs to be on board with that. It's kind of like proceduralism 101 or 001. So that's all I have to say. I would hope to see progress in this area soon. Thank you.
Any other public comment on this item? How about on Zoom? Do we have any public comment?
No, Mayor.
All right, we'll bring it back to the commission. Any discussion or do I have a motion?
I guess I would say thank you for that comment. Well, maybe not all commissioners understand the, or get an orientation in, in appointments. The mayor and vice mayor do. And what is a positive move in transparency is that last year, we did make those things available to all the commissioner, all the applications. And that was, I don't know that it was intentional gatekeeping, but there was certainly not necessarily a sharing of those applications with other commissioners. And that was a change that we made last year, and we were all very comfortable with. So while in the past, that, that, that information was not made available, it is now. And I think that's a step in the right direction. Again, I don't know that it was intentional, but this commission was not comfortable with it, and we made that change. And I would assume that would be going forward as well.
Any other discussion? Not entertain a motion?
Move to approve the appointments as recommended by the mayor.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. All abstain. One, so we got four ayes and one abstain. Commissioner Sellers. Okay, we passed this consent agenda. We're now moving on to our regular agenda item. We just have one tonight. Consider adopting on second and final reading ordinance number 9960, Amending City Code, Chapter 10, Article 1, Sections 10-101, 10-102, and 10-111 to provide equal opportunity to obtain housing regardless of source of income or status as a survivor of domestic violence, sexual assault, human trafficking, or stalking. The staff presentation.
Mayor, hello, Mayor and Commissioners. This is Zach Friedell, Assistant City Attorney. I gave a brief on this ordinance the first time it was presented, and I'll go over kind of the basics of it and where we stand procedurally. So ordinance 9960 was presented at the December 13th City Commission meeting. This is the ordinance that would include source of income as a basis that cannot be discriminated against in housing, and it provides protection for victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, human trafficking, and stalking. This comes to you from the Human Relations Commission, which included these protections as part of a package of proposals. At the December 13th meeting, the commission passed this ordinance on first reading and directed staff to hold a public meeting for engagement specifically with landlord community. That meeting was held on January 5th in this room. There was a panel of city staff, Lawrence Douglas County Housing Authority members, and the Human Relations Commission that addressed a group of more than 100 participants, including people in the room and online. The collected comments are available in your packet for your review. There are no changes in the ordinance since it was last presented at the December 13th meeting, and is up to the commission how to proceed this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of staff from the commission?
Um, yeah, it's a, I had a question. I was able to go ahead and view that meeting. And one thing that I did find curious was the broad nature of the ordinance. And I was wondering, has there been any attempt to go ahead and reach out? I think it was the Realtors Association in terms of how it affects homeownership? Because I thought the ordinance itself was more or less directed at landlords and rentals, and it seems to encapsulate a lot more than that.
Sure. Commissioner Littlejohn, this ordinance does capture more housing practices. This is looking at Chapter 10. It includes the sale of property as well, where discrimination can occur. And so source of income was added in there as a way to protect those, those people in the buying process. That could include things like down payment assistance from a housing authority, things of that nature. It was brought to our attention that there could be concerns with how some real estate is advertised or sold because not all real estate is eligible for financing. Some need. real estate is eligible for financing. Some needs to be a cash only sale. Uh, I, I did meet with some representatives of the real estate community, uh, understand those concerns and that's something that could be incorporated as amendment if the commission directs us to. Uh, I think there is, there is some argument to say that a cash only sale could occur even with this ordinance because that is a form of financing instead of a source of income, but I understand how it could lead to confusion. And so, yes, that was a, those were some comments that were received, uh, through the public engagement process.
Okay. And would, uh, I'm just kind of curious as well. Would adding that as an amendment hold anything up or would we, would we still be able to proceed as normal?
Commissioner, I don't have a package of amendments ready because I haven't been directed to do so. Now that's something that, um, you know, we could, it could be discussed by the commission or, or could come back, uh, at another time. There's always a possibility that the commission could pass it as it is and come back with amendment at a later date. It's kind of up to you how you want, how do you want to handle that?
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Point of clarification, Zach. So if there was an amendment to be made, this is the second reading. In my world, we talk about amendments made on proposed amendments being, being substantive or non-substantive. What depending, what is the threshold for what would be considered substantial or non-substantial in this case, if we wanted to make an amendment to the proposed draft amendments tonight?
Uh, Commissioner, I would leave that to your discretion. Um, you can proceed as you wish.
Thank you.
Is that it for questions of staff? And we'll, um, send it to the audience for questions or for comments from the audience on this item.
My name is Emily Willis Stewart. I'm an associate broker at McGrew Real Estate and I was asked to speak to you on a double dare that somebody would possibly run for the St. Patrick's Day Parade Queen by speaking to you. So I'm here. I brought a couple of forms that concerned me. Um, my biggest fear is that I cannot accept all the vouchers that are available or the subsidies that are available. I do support section eight and I do accept that through my property management company, which is separate from McGrew. However, with my training and my licensing, I cannot accept all of the vouchers based off of some of the paperwork that crosses my desk. Um, I have examples of that, um, that I would really like for you guys to look at. Um, I blacked out names of the tenants. I, um, blacked out the information. So it would not be personal information that was sent forward, but it's a Douglas County, um, Kansas Housing Stabilization Collaborative Form, um, that states information such as race, um, how a person identifies with their gender. It states their household income and their familiar status. And that for me, with my training is unacceptable. And I cannot accept that voucher. So if the tenant chooses to go through that route, then we allow them to do direct payment so that voucher can pay them directly. However, Douglas County Section Eight Housing Authority does not allow, um, direct payment. I have no problems working with Douglas County Housing Authority because they really do honor and respect what I believe are fair housing practices. But I can't, um, I, I beg you to please reconsider the ordinance because it's too broad and it is endangering the property values. It endangers the tenants, um, who are receiving them, um, based off of how they are being presented. Most of my landlords don't know anything about the tenants. They know nothing. So when you send them a document that states that information, it gives a chance for discrimination and I don't, I will not forward a document that could potentially put anyone at risk, whether it be the tenant, myself, or the landlord in that situation. And so I ask that you guys reconsider it and that you really look forward to having some, brokerage input, Lawrence Board of Realtor input, um, with this because it's so important and it's, it could endanger the property values. It could endanger, um, what is available for section eight tenants and, um, the quality of housing for all Lawrence residents that may be renting or looking for housing. Period.
Thank you.
I'm Alka Meironuk again. Uh, every measure has been taken to appease the greedy landlord class of the city. A symposium was held to share the benefits to landlords of participating in affordable housing programs. The measure under discussion today, the protection of source of income and survivor status, uh, has been stalled by the city commission to wait for input from the local landlord class. They held a panel to get input from those same landlords. The same consideration was not made for tenants. Mayor Lisa Larson herself is a landlord. That doesn't mean she's a bad person, just that she has a financial interest in protecting the landlord class from even the smallest, most harmless of reforms that will help tenants. The landlord class has too much unchecked power in Lawrence. Hopefully we, the tenants, can change that. Passing this legislation will help keep Lawrence residents off the streets. It can be the difference between sleeping inside and freezing to death. It can mean the difference between being able to get a job or being passed over for having no fixed address. The landlords don't want to change anything about how they run their business. The landlords, our livelihoods are another investment in their portfolios. To us, the tenants, housing is shelter. Housing is survival. We, the tenants, demand that this commission passes income protection legislation. Tenants are 50% of Lawrence residents. We voted you in and we can make sure that none of you see another term of governance again. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
Back again. Sorry about the confusion earlier.
Okay.
Kirby Evers. Um, so I guess.
Did you state your name for the record?
My name is Kirby Evers. I live in South Side of Lawrence. Um, kind of add on to that. I'm, I'm a landlord myself, uh, got a couple of tenants. And I know that what was discussed just now is kind of right. We're prioritized at the end of the day about the, the bottom line. To make sure that everything's profitable, to make sure we're making money on our properties. And just like how oil companies, uh, whine about, uh, environmental protections and just the way slaughterhouses complain about, uh, animal rights protections, we tend to, uh, shirk away from anything that might protect renters because it puts a bit more, uh, control on our end. As legislatures, you need to somehow try to push back past that as best you can. At the end of the day, we need to look at what's most possible for us in our economic, uh, conditions to try to push this. Because at, at the end of the day, they're right. Renters are the majority, uh, in this case. Homeowners are going to be sympathetic to the renters. Your elected positions are kind of in the hands of them. We're a minority here. And so for me, this is about how far can we push this for the renters? Make sure that we give as much teeth on this as possible. We have the resources to protect ourselves. We have financial security that other people don't. For renters, their risk is becoming homeless. It's not a matter of falling into being a homeowner. It's not a matter of falling back to being a worker. It's homelessness for them. And so the priority should be on them, especially if this, uh, commission has been trying to push for reducing homelessness. It's in line with that. And so I just ask that going forward, we make sure that we prioritize renters, that we don't peel away that, like, any of the protections on this. This needs teeth. This needs to make sure that at the end of the day, someone is getting some kind of consequence for refusing to allow tenants just on this alone, having a different rent income source. Trying to advocate on my, uh, or against my own behalf is a bit difficult, I gotta say. But I know that at the end of the day, we're kind of on the wrong side of this. Okay. As a landlord, we're being jerks. Okay. A lot of the people here, it's not because they're bad people. It's just because in any situation, in any financial situation, they're prioritized in one direction. And that's going to be a big, uh, influence on our attitudes around this. But at the end of the day, it's about the working class. It's about the vast, uh, majority of people in the community. The people that are going to suffer the most are the renters, are the people that are homeless, that are trying to get out of homelessness and such. I believe that you are in favor of this. I'm just asking that you guys push a little bit harder, push as hard as you can. That's all I can ask of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirby.
My name is Clavin Snow. I am not Langston Hughes, but I also would like to ask what happens to a dream deferred. It is not lost on the citizenry that you ran your campaigns on housing issues and failed to pass some very basic housing protection when it came before you as a commission. So as your public trust corrodes, more and more of Lawrence's population is falling into homelessness due in part to the fact that landlords are refusing to accept some of the most reliable income there is. I'm not a renter. I, I own my home, but you know, just we have dough. And haven't most of us been renters at some point? My interest is not for myself. It's for the public stability of the city that we live in. It's far from ancient history that we were discussing the homeless encampment, like just a few minutes ago. Several residents of said encampment wouldn't be residents of a homeless encampment if landlords would simply accept the income available to them for housing. Our city would have residents of homes instead of tents. I don't want to overs- oversimplify the issue at large, but this, this is very simple. There is an opportunity to prevent homelessness from befalling more residents of your city. Like you had your chance a few weeks ago and you blew it. Maybe you can get it right this time. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Megan Willison. I've been a homeowner in Lawrence, uh, for 24 years and a landlord for seven. And I'm here today to ask, um, that you pass this ordinance. I'm in support of it. Like Kirby, I know it, it is somewhat awkward to act what some may consider to be against my own self-interest. But I feel like it's a very common sense measure. Anytime I have a vacancy in a, in a rental, I'm inundated with, um, people with vouchers, which I do accept. And it's unfortunate that I don't have enough units to provide housing for all of them. Um, these are, these are good people who, who need homes and there simply aren't enough landlords willing to accept these vouchers. My experience with the voucher program through the housing authority has been very positive. I see the housing authority as an extra level of support. My experience with my tenants who have vouchers has also been overwhelmingly positive. I find that tenants with a voucher are often incentivized to stay a part of the program and have been wonderful tenants. Respectful and, and clean and without any problems at all. I have, um, spent far more time and far more energy and money cleaning up messes and making repairs for tenants who do not have vouchers than I have tenants with vouchers. That's been my experience. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Megan.
Hi, my name is Michelle and I've been a resident of Lawrence all of my life. I've rented for 10 years of my life in this town. And the comment meant, uh, as a person who has rented and a person who has also worked for rental companies, I'd like to address the issue of someone saying that landlords are greedy and they're all rich and they're not caring about anyone else but themselves. That's just simply not true. There are lots of local landlords in this town who don't make a lot of profit, but only put the money back in to what their, their properties to keep them good for their tenants so that they have a good place to live. You know, there are local people, local citizens who work hard and just have to pay their mortgages and their bills like anyone else. As according to the voucher system, um, there should be something to do for the housing that's crisis that's going on. But the voucher system isn't fully tweaked to as much as it could be. The vouchers can be removed or adjusted at any time period. If the voucher system was signing a rental agreement, just like a tenant was, binding themselves to a certain amount during a certain period of time along with that tenant, that would help the people, the landlords, to continue the process of keeping a good environment for their tenants. I, I don't think anyone doesn't want to accept tenants. Uh, they just need more of a safety net. There's a lot of things going against landlords. Property taxes have risen. Mortgage rates, they aren't fixed for landlords. While we're asking, is that perhaps Lawrence or the voucher system figure out a way to make it work for both sides? So that there isn't as much risk towards landlords because all of the burden is going towards the landlords. And we need to make this a system that works not only for the tenants and the, the people who need vouching help, but also the landlords. So everyone should feel good about going into a legal financial agreement together. This should be something that everyone that goes into doesn't feel like there, any of us is taking advantage of. There should be some sort of incentive or some sort of agreement. Perhaps the voucher system needs to put more responsibility in their half that they guarantee certain amounts during a certain rental agreement period. If that was something that was done, I think a lot of the local landlords would feel more secure in entering these housing vouchers. But the fact that the vouchers can be taken away or the prices can be adjusted any, any time, that isn't what they're agreeing to. The tenants who are being held accountable, but the voucher systems are not. And that's what needs to possibly be addressed before this ordinance.
Thank you, Michelle.
Hi there. I'm still Kevin Elliott. Um, I am a section eight voucher recipient. While I've looked for apartments, I've been told, uh, I only want to rent to students. I've been told, uh, I don't do section eight vouchers because they lower the value of my property. Basically, I've been told that poor people are not wanted. There's been in the last year, over a thousand units fall off section eight, uh, by landlords. And I understand that's happened over the last three years. It's been a fairly consistent number. That shows that, that landlords are not willing to work with section eight.
Excuse me, Kevin. Could we, um, be quiet? I have a hard time hearing. So if you, I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. Sorry.
I'm sorry. Um, what I, what I would like to suggest, I've lost my train now. I'm sorry. Um, I would like, I think that it's very important that we all become good citizens of this community. I do my part. I volunteer at the homeless shelter. I volunteer for the Ballard Center when I can. I volunteer for the community. I have to be a good citizen of this community. So do landlords. Part of our housing problem is, comes from landlords not working with section eight. And that's why we see more and more people at the homeless camps every year. This is a chance to do something about it, to do what's right instead of doing what's in special interests. And as I mentioned earlier, I think special interests has won a lot lately. Let's, let's have a win for the people.
Thank you, Kevin.
Hello again. My name is Lacey Rowe. Homelessness is the culmination of every systemic failure that our society has created. Homelessness is the result of the highest levels of income inequality ever recorded in U.S. history. It is the result of a broken healthcare system. It is the result of a broken criminal justice system. It is the result of a broken foster care system. Homelessness is the result of too many kids and adults with significant childhood trauma. It is the result of marginalized communities. It is the result of generational trauma. Homelessness is the result of not confronting the everyday realities of our most at-risk community members. It is the result of failed policies that perpetuate harm. It is the result of othering people that are considered different. Setting people up for failure by not meeting their needs and then blaming them when they lose their home is cruel and unethical. Homelessness is on the rise as a public health crisis, both locally and nationally. Right now, Lawrence landlords can legally discriminate against anyone that is poor enough to qualify for rental help. People who can pay for their rent without help have to pass standard screening practices. People who can pay their rent with the help of a voucher are often automatically rejected. A survey of 115 available rental units in Lawrence in May of 2021 showed that 80% would not accept housing choice vouchers or rental assistance. Overcoming systemic obstacles, applying for financial assistance, accessing needed healthcare, keeping up with appointments, navigating the bus system, working long hours at a job that pays below a living wage, and trying to stay motivated under high stress is hard work. On top of all that hard work, on top of all that high stress, to do everything right and still get stuck in limbo because your housing applications keep getting rejected is demoralizing. We need to do better. Our city must adopt source of income protections and all related accountability measures in order to just make this work and make it better for our community. Thank you.
My name is Amy Mags and I'm from South Lawrence. I am an abuse survivor.
I am an abuse surviving Lawrence tenant who has to work three to four jobs to make ends meet while managing multiple disabilities. This is the reality of late-stage capitalism and the reason I am spending my very limited free time with you tonight to rally for our need for the basic anti-discrimination protection that this ordinance allows. Rental applications are scary, the reason being that even if I have rent money, either by my own paychecks or by housing assistance, I can still be denied because of a landlord's bias. Many property owners love to complain about our homeless neighbors, about recovering abuse survivors, the disabled community, or young people who leave the state looking for better opportunities, all while denying us resources because of their own prejudice. The fact that it is protected, that landlord comfort is being given a priority when, at the end of the day, rent money is rent money, this is alarming. I'm calling on you to make humane decisions that we elected you for and to support this housing ordinance. The working class deserves better. I also understand that not all landlords are wealthy, that not all landlords are the most biased that they could be. This is not a reason to not have accountability for the others. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Other public comment on this item? Come on up.
Hello, my name is Rowan Shering. I live in West Lawrence and I am a renter. Most of the people I know are renters, like they were saying, you know, over 50% of people in Lawrence are renters. And I think that the working poor, disabled, and elderly folks in our community deserve housing. And I think that ordinance 9960 would be a very reasonable and needed step towards getting everybody housed and increasing the overall standard of living and well-being of our community. I think that from everything I was reading, that it looks like the data shows that it doesn't actually raise rent to introduce a source of income ordinance or a source of income protection. And it statistically gets people into housing faster when they have vouchers. It would also benefit small business owners who might otherwise be discriminated against because they don't have regular employment income. So if you would go ahead and adopt that ordinance on second reading, I would really appreciate it and I ask you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Sam Allison Atalay. I reside at 1672 North 1500 Road. I'm an attorney. I'm the Executive Director of Kansas Holistic Defenders. And I want to tell you, this is a good idea. You should pass this ordinance. I want to talk about three things that I think everyone in this room cares about. Stopping discrimination, putting good landlords on equal footing, and a return on investment in our social services. So first thing, stopping discrimination. As a lawyer with a deep interest in civil rights, I can tell you that unless you ban all forms of discrimination, folks will use the legal forms as a pretext for illegal forms. If you want to discriminate against a tenant because you're racist and they are on public assistance, you can deny them and use the source of income as a pretext what you're really trying to discriminate against them for, right? This happens with people in a variety of situations, with disabilities, if you're a single mother. If you don't prohibit landlords from discriminating on the basis of source of income, you actually can't stop them from discriminating on all of these other invidious bases, right? So if you want to take a stand on stopping discrimination, this is how you do it. Second, there's a number of landlords, and I commend them, who've come up and said, "I like the voucher system. I want to take vouchers," right? Well, we do have some landlords who care about this community. We also have big private equity, right? Like out-of-state, big hedge fund money that's coming in and buying up all the trailer parks, buying up a whole lot of the private houses. And they're just interested in a short-term profit. So what they do is they evict everybody on Section 8. They evict everybody that they can. And then they try to sell back shares of the rental properties as investments to other out-of-state investors. And this is a blight on our community. But those folks are getting a free ride. Those folks come in from out of town, out of town money, right? And are able to reap the benefits of being landlords without having to do any of the work of providing housing for people in our community that really need it. So I think that we should not put the good people in this town, the good landlords that take these vouchers, at a disadvantage competitively with private equity. Everyone in Lawrence should have to take some share of the responsibility for providing housing to people who need it most. And the last thing is just very personal. I spend all day, and everyone in our office spends all day, working to try to get people housed. It's the number one thing that we work on. You all have made, the county has made so much investment in social services, but you're cutting us off at the knees if we can't make sure that people on housing vouchers get, actually have a place to spend those.
Thank you, Sam. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I just want to touch on what he said because I'm glad I let him go first. Because he said just about everything that I was going to say about discrimination. But he hit a point that really, you guys need to listen to what he said about the major companies. And you need to think back to 2008. You know, they wrap these things up as investments and ship them out. And who gets hurt in the long run in these situations? It's always, it's always the low man on the totem pole that gets hurt, while everybody else takes their money and runs. We have some big-name people around here that are felons that are still getting paid. You know, it's time that we start holding some serious, big-time landlords accountable. You hear some of these smaller people coming in here. I have a friend that takes the voucher, okay? It's not that hard to do as long as it's managed properly. What you have is a situation where the large companies don't want to be managed. Thank you.
Other public comment on this item?
Hello, my name is Savannah Fergus. I'm with the Lawrence Community Shelter. I came to echo what everyone else is saying, that I support this ordinance. If you ask any of our clients what they want, it's housing. It's always been housing. It's a human right. And this truthfully is a small step to solving that problem. This is not going to solve the crisis here. This is a small step and it should be an easy pass. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Andy Johnson. My pronouns are he/him. And I am the Director of Finance and Operations with the Lawrence Community Shelter. I am here to support the passage of this ordinance. I think that it is incredibly important. I'd like to echo what my colleague just said, as far as the folks that we work with, all they want is housing. And there's so many other barriers that they're facing on a day-to-day basis to get there. This is one thing that we can control. This is something that we can take out. Through part of our housing program at the Lawrence Community Shelter, we have folks that are working with getting people in housing. We cover their rent with various grants and funds that we use. And I think that this could be something that could really change a lot of lives. I want to share a couple of personal stories. The first one is that this doesn't always necessarily have to do, we talk about vouchers, vouchers. It's not necessarily that. An experience that I have 20 years ago as a student, I received financial aid to be able to go to school. And I was turned away. That was my, that was my source of income, was my financial aid. And I would be turned away from rental property after rental property because I wanted to use my financial aid as my income to pay my rent. I was ready to sit down and write a check for the entire school year. And I would be turned away from that, simply because it wasn't a job. Thankfully, I did find a place and I was able to finish my undergraduate program. Another quick story that I'd like to share. A year ago, a year ago, I was really ill. I was unable to work, had been unable to work for about a year and a half. And because of the health issues that I was dealing with, I did not have any income. And thankfully, my landlord accepted CARE payments for my rent. And that gave me an opportunity to breathe and it gave me an opportunity to recover and feel better and re-enter the workforce. And like I said, I am now the Director of Finance and Operations out at the Lawrence Community Shelter. A big part of my experience through the CARE program, as well as some of the other public assistance that I was able to take advantage of during that time and utilize to get back on my feet, is what led me to where I am now. And I think that everyone deserves that same type of opportunity. I have people that I know, people that we've worked with, whose landlords straight out refused to accept CARE. They wouldn't sign the document. That's all they needed was a signature. They wouldn't accept it. With source of income protection, those types of things wouldn't happen. So thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
Hello, my name is Azlory. I'm cut in. I've been a Lawrence resident for about half a decade now. I'm going to try my best to contain my passion and just be brief and specific. This ordinance is important and it's specific in the sense that has already been mentioned a couple of times in far better and easier words than mine. The idea of the protection against discrimination being a, like being removed as a pretense to increase other discriminations is so poignant and succinct. It's within living memory that a lot of these discriminations that are very explicitly protected were not protected. And folks in the room behind me and like my neighbors would not be able to get homes based on those protections. So having any kind of discrimination is just always going to be wrong. And if the system is already fundamentally broken and it needs to be fixed outside of our living lifetimes, what we can do now in our community with our neighbors is remove any obstacle that those types of discriminations can create. So I am deeply in favor of this ordinance and I encourage you to accept it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jackie Potts. I also work at LCS. Everyone here has been so eloquent, so you'll have to excuse me, I hate public speaking. I just have a couple of quick points. I support this ordinance. I think it's great. Housing is a human right. And the voucher money is oftentimes more reliable than generic employment. And sometimes people miss rent, but the vouchers are pretty much guaranteed all the time. And last, just quick thing, being a landlord isn't really a job. If you're that worried about extra money, maybe go work somewhere. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lois Schneider. And I do work somewhere. I work taking care of my houses. I own 17 of them with the bank. The ordinance requires landlords to take a significant financial risk. The voucher system takes no risk or responsibility for the recipients of the vouchers. They must put the burden directly on the landlord. We are not, we cannot afford the potential burden. This ordinance threatens our livelihood and should not be passed. I have been a landlord for 35-plus years. I raised my children here in Lawrence, with our rental property solely our only support. Over this time, we have worked hard to create policies to protect our properties, non-discriminatory policies. The ordinance forces us to amend the policies and take on increased risk. It's not an easy time to be a business owner, let alone a landlord. There is a great financial risk. Our risk, current risk, include my mortgages, which go up 2% every year. We're unable to get fixed-rate mortgages. Property taxes have skyrocketed. Mine increased $7,000 this year alone. Not very many people can afford that. I know I can't. Inflation has and will increase our general expenses, as it is everyone's. This ordinance forces me, us, to give up some of the protections that we have in place to assure us of stable income. Vouchers are the problem. Vouchers amounts can change, be taken away with very little notice, like less than a month. During the period of the rental agreement, the vouchers are not tied to our rental agreements. The tenant is held liable for rent, but the voucher systems are not. If damages are done in excess of deposit, there is no one to collect from. The voucher system does not offer compensation for occurrences of this nature. At this time, the voucher systems are simply too flawed to make this ordinance a good thing. In closing, most of us who own and manage our own properties here in Lawrence are not rich. The money we make from the rent goes directly into our business. We support our employees and local businesses, like electricians and plumbers, that help us to maintain our properties for our tenants. We're not just concerned about our own well-being, we're concerned about the well-being of the people that we financially support. I spent $12,000 a month for the last year on just paying people to do things. Not their individual stuff, not supplies or anything like that, just salary, just paying my employees and the plumbers and electricians and the carpenters and everybody else that I have to hire to do things.
Time. Thank you, Lois.
Hello, my name is Dean Robinson. Today, I'm here to voice my support for public ordinance 9960, which would classify source of income as a protected class in the city of Lawrence. After previous public hearings on this ordinance, it seems that some of the landlords in Lawrence believe that this ordinance would make them accept lazy, no-good troglodytes into their homes where they will eat their porridge and sleep in their beds. These landlords see no problem with making an elderly or disabled person homeless if it means that they have a secure source of income. To these landlords, tenants are no longer people, but rather an object that owes them money on the first of every month. Because of this, it is impossible for them in the position they are in to have any rational thought on how tenants should be treated. Everyone deserves to have a place to live, especially the voucher recipients covered in this bill. These voucher recipients, as covered in previous public hearings, include elderly, disabled, and workers who are unable to afford rent. To deny these people housing based purely on the reason that they are using housing vouchers would be absurd. I hope the City Commission listens to myself and others who are speaking in support of these housing protections. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alex G. Zicki. I work in social services. I've worked with a bunch of different vouchers, a lot of different landlords, but most importantly, a lot of different tenants. And I wanted to say that discrimination does happen here for source of income. I've seen it a lot and it hurts our vulnerable populations. And there are programs available for the landlords. There's a landlord tenant, or landlord incentive offered by the Lawrence Douglas County Housing Authority. And there's also Building Peace, which is landlord-renter, landlord-tenant mediation. And I encourage all landlords to utilize these programs. It can help protect against damages that you fear that don't always happen. They usually don't. It's just hurting our vulnerable populations when you say that. It's funny because I've been a landlord in a position as well. There's a large power differential between landlords and tenants, with landlords holding a lot of power. And this ordinance would really help protect tenants and their rights. Everyone has a right to safe and affordable housing, but I don't see that reflected always. Sometimes I do. And I want to thank the landlords who work with housing vouchers and housing choice The city of Lawrence needs to adopt ordinances to protect people with housing vouchers. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex.
Melanie Valdez, Lawrence Community Shelter. I am also in support of the ordinance. And I will say, as an agency that uses HUD funding other than vouchers to help house people and provide them assistance to gain that stability, we also see discrimination happening here in Lawrence. And considering that HUD assistance, or HUD-funded assistance programs across the country are the majority minorities, or funding minorities, and also a large percent of those funded are disabled and elderly, I have to look at this and ask myself, who are we really discriminating against? Because I know who it's impacting. Because I know who it's impacting. And just as previous people have said, it is the marginalized populations that are impacted. And what is really hard to see in my position is this is happening because assumptions are being made about people. Assumptions being made that can happen or people can experience across the board. It has nothing to do with income. Income does not determine if you will damage property. Income does not determine how clean you are. Having your source of income does not determine whether those obligations will be followed through or on or not. People can lose their jobs. They can have an accident that changes their life. They can have an illness or anything. There are no guarantees. And I have also been a landlord myself. And I did have over forty thousand dollars worth of damage to my home from a family that did not receive rental assistance. And that is part of the business. That is a fact. You have to expect it. There are no guarantees. You will have losses. You will have things that don't work out. But for us to be able to move forward as a community and address our affordable housing issue, our issue with homelessness, and also start really working towards homelessness prevention so we don't continue to have a growing problem. We have to protect people from discrimination based on Source of Income. And like I said, it is not just vouchers. It could be SSI, SSDI, grants, grant funding that's assisting with different things. And we see it. It happens. There are people getting denied simply based on who's making out that check and where that money is coming from. It has nothing to do with any increased risk compared to the general population. It is just simply discrimination. Thank you.
Any other public comment on this?
Let's see. Hi, so I'm Jasmine Bates. I'm a tenant. I live in Lawrence. I want to note that I'm not commenting on behalf of any organization tonight. And I just want to say that as long as housing is both a basic need and something that there's a small number of people can make money off of, whether that is something they consider profit or something they're making a living off of, there is just going to be those who are making a living from landlord-ing that will oppose progress towards providing safe, affordable housing for all in our community. I attended the commission meeting where this was first read on December thirteenth, and then I attended the landlord panel on January fifth. And I reviewed tonight's agenda packet, which is pretty thick. The majority, if not all, of the opposing public comments that I have heard and read are from landlords. And they appear to be based on a lack of, excuse me. You're okay. The comments that are negative appear to be based on a lack of understanding of the ordinance or Okay, so the majority, if not all, of the opposing public comments I have heard and read are from landlords. And they're generally based on a lack of understanding of the ordinance or just classism towards people who need vouchers or need rent assistance. In contrast to those comments, the ordinance is based on data, law is successfully working in other cities, and the needs of our community. So I support this ordinance wholeheartedly. I ask commissioners to take action, hold to your campaign promises and your strategic plan, and accept that making changes that are good for the community will not always come without conflict, pushback, anger, or fear. Thanks.
Thank you, Jasmine. Other public comment on this?
Hi, my name is Gabby Sprague, and I'm speaking for myself this evening. I've been in this community for the past nine years. I hope that if I were to fall on hard times, I would be given the opportunity to use rental assistance until I could get back on my feet. Source of Income Protections would help me and many others in time of need. We've spoken a lot about the administrative burden that this might place on landlords, and I wanted to give some context to that. I live in Ad Astra, which is a cooperative home and a collective that is people's own and operated collective housing, or POOCH. During the pandemic, we kept fifty households in their home and healthy, and it was a no small part in thanks to the Kansas Mercy Rental Assistance Program or the CARA program that people have mentioned before. I hope that any perceived risk or administrative burden that a landlord would take on in renting to a voucher holder is outweighed by the benefit of guaranteed monthly income despite any tenant hardship. Broadly, our community needs this discrimination protection. Time and time again, this ordinance has been shown to improve housing outcomes in communities throughout the country. When we have roughly sixty thousand renters and only about two thousand landlords, this policy would benefit the majority and is thus an effective public policy. I share similar frustrations as those I work with when a landlord owning many properties stops accepting rental assistance or vouchers without any reasoning given. And that number continues to increase with out-of-town speculators coming into our community, buying up property, and doing what's best for them as opposed to what's best for us. Please promote public policy that creates a safe and welcoming community for all, particularly Lawrence's disabled, elderly, and working-class voucher holders. Housing is a human right, and this ordinance is a small step towards making that a reality. Thank you for your service to this community. Please vote to approve this ordinance.
Thank you, Gabby. Public comment, other public comment on this?
Good evening. My name is Jeremy Long. I currently own five houses, rental houses. I also have a full-time job. I manage the houses myself, and lots have been said about risk and administrative burden and then personal feelings toward the tenants. I have no ill feelings toward anyone based on their source of income. However, the additional administrative burden will be significant. For someone like me, for example, I do most of my administrative work after I get off my day job. So in the evening and on the weekends, unless it's an emergency for the tenants. And that has worked well renting for tenants. I have a one-to-one relationship with them. We can text. We can talk on the evenings and the weekends. If I'm forced to accept a voucher tenant, it's not going to work because then I have a housing authority involved in my business relationship as well. And they said at the landlord panel when I was here that if you need to reach us after hours, just email us and we'll respond to you within forty-eight hours. That's not going to work, and that's going to increase my burden significantly. Unfortunately, if this passes, I feel I will need to either do one of two things. Hire a management company to manage my rental properties or sell them as they become empty. And I just hope you consider what happens with the small landlords in this community, not just large, you know, five hundred unit complexes. It will have a drastic impact on us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Shannon Reed, and I'm here with a few different hats on tonight. First, as a Douglas County Commissioner, I'm here to reiterate our governing body's support for this very basic policy update in the largest city in our county with the highest rate of residents who rent, which, as has been mentioned before, is a majority of Lawrence residents. We expressed during our joint city-county meeting last year that we hope Source of Income Protections would soon become codified by the city. It's the sort of low-hanging fruit that I think we should all be reaching for, and it's one rather tiny step in the right direction. Another hat I wear is as a victim advocate. I work with survivors who need these protections every day. I'm grateful that the HRC also recommended that the city code reflect explicitly the protections provided by state law for domestic violence and human trafficking victims. And I'm hopeful that it goes a long way towards educating local landlords about those specific rights and protections. Recently, I actually hung up my Ahab hat or passed it along to a fellow commissioner, really. But in my past two years of service on that board, these protections were a significant topic of discussion. I think it's fair to say, on behalf of all Ahab members, that we were really grateful that the HRC took on this topic with such seriousness and studied the issue alongside our community partners, which have been invaluable in this process in much greater depth than we would have or could have in the Affordable Housing Advisory Board. This policy, this policy change has truly been vetted. The public at large has been thoroughly engaged, and two years later, we're finally here. Another part of my identity that influences support for this issue, I'm a townie who grew up in poverty and all that comes with that, housing instability and periodic homelessness, most notably. We would have absolutely qualified for Section Eight subsidy, which would have no doubt reduced some of the harms of the poverty cycles that felt like, I imagine, what quicksand feels like. But my mom was afraid to apply because of her own experiences of discrimination on occasion from landlords whenever she had to seek charitable financial assistance to help cover a month's rent. And also, she had friends with vouchers who had difficulty finding a safe and healthy place to live with that subsidy in hand. In order for us to make rent on time, we usually had to make a sacrifice, whichever utility we could live without for a few weeks, no home phone, or not enough food. Of course, housing costs continuously rise and income levels remain stagnant. I'm now twenty years beyond that childhood, and things keep getting worse for most people living and working in poverty. And more folks find themselves facing it daily. I'm one of the privileged poor kids who found my way to economic security. And so soon, I'm going to be wearing a new, probably ill-fitting and uncomfortable hat because I will be a landlord soon. With just one unit, my partner and I intend to sign up with our lovely housing authority in the future.
Thank you, Shannon. Appreciate your comments. Thank you, Shannon. Tim, do you want to come up?
Hello, everyone. I'm Toulson. I have found myself into a house, and I'm finally comfortable and I have a place to say is my own, and I'm behind a locked door. It's a wonderful feeling. But if it wasn't for the voucher system and my landlord taking the vouchers, I would not be off the street. I would still be out in Tent City or wherever else I could find myself warm and try to keep myself there. I think it's very important that we do find a way to help the housing, urban development, all of the people at Burton Ash and their housing and how they're helping out the people get out the street. It's important that we find a way to help all of them, make it easier for the next guy to be able to come up and find a place, too. I don't have a lot to say about anything other than I really believe it's very important that we get all of the help we can to these people because they're the ones that are going to get us, the homeless population down. And that's what we're all trying to get, and we can achieve it, but we have to have help. And all those decisions and all of those places need funding, need help. And we can all do much better if we're off the street. We know that. Thank you for your time, guys.
Thank you, Tim.
Hello, City Commission. My name is Merrill Sage, and I just wanted to say that I'm noticing a little bit of energy in this meeting that reminds me of some photos of state Capitol meetings where there's some commissioning and debating or people are making decisions. And there's some people in the background with name tags that are, that are watching but not really saying anything. And I'm noticing, for the exception of Steve, Steve, that there seems to be a lack of male, white male perspective that is against the ordinance. And I think there's, there's people that represent that demographic at this meeting that I am disappointed that I'm not hearing from, but that seem to be very invested in the outcome of what's happening today. Thank you.
Other public comment on this item from the audience? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Magnuson, and I wasn't planning on coming to this meeting tonight. I'm just here. It randomly came up. And I think the city of Lawrence is great with housing vouchers and Burton Ash. I'm from Wishaw. Nothing happens like that there. I mean, I've never been on the streets in Wishaw, but I mean, basically, I'm, I'm on the streets now. I've been on the streets for, I don't know, like about a year. And the more money you have, the worse it is. Like, can you, like, I know you're talking about the elderly and disabled. I've been thrown out of moving vehicles. My feet ran over. There's police reports on it. I've gone to Burton Ash. I mean, they don't do, like, I mean, and then my dad will just send me money and trust me to get a room somewhere. And I will, but it all goes to the super eight. Like, I don't know what, he doesn't even know what to do for me. My dad's seventy-two years old, getting Alzheimer's. And he's basically like, a couple of weeks ago, I just got a phone today with phone service, and I'm so happy about that. Because the last six phones I've had on the streets have been, I don't, I mean, I'm just trying to make it. I've never been to Tent City. I've heard about it. I've heard too many people dying in there, too. Susan, Angel Cowden. I mean, there are so many. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm going to be in a warm place, like, I mean, I, I stay in, but I'm just, I'm terrified of Lawrence. Now, I'm ready to move back, and I am begging you. Like, just, I'll probably move back. I don't, I'm trying to. I mean, I have a place, I think I have a place at Willow. I'm not sure. Now that I have a phone, I can actually call every day and not have to go to the Dare Center. What happens at the Dare Center, if I go to the Dare Center, is once you're just, I mean, the more money you have on the streets, even when I go to the Dare Center, I'm terrified. You know, I'm here with a friend of mine tonight, and I'm not going to say, you know, I don't want to call. But I mean, I go to the bathroom and literally, if I needed to do anything, I literally don't. You know, I always, I get robbed every single freaking week, every single week. My dad sends me money. I get robbed. I'm just trying to get back on my medication and get a job, even if I don't get back on my medication at this point. And I don't know if this is the appropriate place. I'm sorry, you guys. But, you know, I wouldn't even plan on coming here at night. I don't know if this is the appropriate place to be saying all this because probably I have a crisis worker at Burton Ash, too. I could be saying this, too, but she only works Monday through Sunday, and I, this wasn't planned for me to come here. And I think the city of Lawrence is, I mean, great when it comes to housing vouchers. I mean, if you're in Wishaw, if you ain't got a job, you're going to be on the street. I was never on the streets in Wishaw, but I'm just saying, I didn't know the streets were this bad in Lawrence. Like, you need to consider helping, like.
Time. Thank you, Stephanie. Appreciate your comments.
Hi, I'm Nancy Snow yet again. I think you know which side of the line I'll come down on in this one. I appreciate all of the perspectives that we've heard tonight. We can think about this in terms of goods and in terms of harms. We can think about promoting the good of the community, and we can think about preventing harms. If this passes, some people have said they will be harmed. They will have to sell properties. They will have to hire a property management company. On the other hand, if it doesn't pass, an opportunity to create a path from homelessness to becoming housed will have been missed. So the people, like the woman we just heard from, will continue to be harmed by a lack of housing. They will continue to be vulnerable. So I would ask you to think in terms of harms because then the issue becomes quite clear. Some harms can be managed by those who have to bear them. Others cannot be managed by those who have to bear them. And those harms accumulate and build up to a point where you have death, you have violence, you have overdoses. This is not the kind of community that I thought Lawrence was, a community that tolerates those kinds of things. So I think we can do better. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Tiffany Cop. I believe it should be passed. I've been out here for four years. I've been homeless for four years. The reason that I became homeless was because I was, I was escaping an abusive relationship. I didn't think that I would be coming into this situation where I'm watching people die, people overdosing, stuff like that. I expected to get a job. I expected to get a home. Within a year, well, look, three years passed from a year. Well, things that I've come across with trying to get a home and a job is discrimination. It's because I'm homeless. They think that I'm going to cause trouble, that I'm not going to be able to do what I'm supposed to do. Well, I'm twenty-two years old. I'm willing to do what I'm supposed to do to get my act together. I'm trying. I want to. I'm willing. I really believe that this should be passed so I could have help and other people that I love out there should be helped. I really care. I'd really like to see it passed because growing up here, I moved here in two thousand thirteen. It's twenty-twenty-three now, so ten years. I did not know about the homeless community. My parents kept me away from that. And I understand now why they did so because they didn't want me to see because they didn't want me to see what was actually going on in Lawrence, Kansas. I have a friend that's been homeless for nine years. If I would have been out there during that time, I would have seen what was actually going on. You guys are hiding it behind, and people are seeing it. People are realizing what's going on. My friends have died out there. I could die at any given time, and I'm only 22. We don't know when I'm going to die. I could be hurt out there. I could die. I want to have a home that I could lock the door, not a tent that someone could come in and kill me. I don't want that anymore. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Tiffany. Other public comment on this item?
I'm Jennifer Woolsey again. I go by Jen. This is probably a little unorthodox. This is one of my unhoused friends, Summer Culberson. For support, I'm going to stand here with her, okay?
Summer, no, what a, no, what a nice choice.
Okay. So I'm going to go first, and then Summer's going to go. Is that fair? Okay, I appreciate that. Tonight, I'm in the room with some very well-spoken and eloquent subject matter experts. I feel so privileged to be in this room. Thank you all. Also, as a subject matter expert who has been homeless, works in homelessness, and has a passion in this field, someone said I was passionate. That's great. I have said it once, and I said it many times, affordable, equitable housing is the only true solution to end homelessness. The National Homeless Alliance, another subject matter expert, has said, "Research shows landlords deny housing to households with federal rental assistance, particularly in markets without source of income protections." That's research. It's no one's opinion. That is research. While several states and localities have passed sources of income protection laws, federal law does not prohibit this type of discrimination. As a result, only one in three households with a voucher are protected by non-discrimination laws. That is, unless a community, a municipality, steps up and says that we care. And that's what they're asking Lawrence to do. Another subject matter expert, which is the National Low Income Housing Coalition, they report rental assistance can, not maybe, but can and will improve health and educational outcomes, increase a child's chance of long-term success, and also increase racial equity. So we talk about our kiddos, right? We talk about generational homelessness. We talk about generational poverty. These are the types of ordinances that put a stop to that. And that's where we're at. That's what we're seeing as far as generational poverty in general. We're seeing discrimination against poverty, and that's not fair or equitable. I think that's what I wanted to say, other than housing is a human right, but most importantly, housing is a basic need, and everyone should have a right to housing. So I would ask you to pass this ordinance. This is just one very small step of a many big steps that have to happen, but this can easily be done. And Lawrence, talk about one Lawrence, all Lawrence. This will prove tonight that we are one Lawrence. We are all Lawrence, and we are here for everyone to thrive. Anyone say, dear?
I came here because two in one February 20th December. I came here from project two. I'm originally from South Dakota, I'm from Missouri. Population is 470 people. I've been called everything. I was a prostitute. My mom was a prostitute. I was winded up, crammed up, cut up. And the COVID, I deemed that the Corona happened. Oh, well, stopped, but the money tried to knock. I wasn't born as a heroin addict. I'm allergic to nicotine. I don't pay for serotonin. I am always chasing for happiness. I took a break off from college because I did not understand why. I have had lithium since I was two. I've been in mental health facilities my whole life. But Borough Behavioral Health was as small as your homeless outreach when I first went there. But it's a multimillion-dollar company in Springfield, Missouri now. I did not understand what was going on. But the whole world is frauding the government, from doctors to mental health places. I've been in jail 57 times in this county. This is not a country. This is all native land. Haskell is neutral land for natives. KU was built on multi-culture. I've had three KU students spit on me. I thought you need to have courage. You need to have a heart, and you need to have a brain. I've been molested since I was three months old. I started for 17 years in foster care. I dropped out of school to take care of my two sisters because foster parents were taking their money. But I stripped for 15 years. Every negative that not thrown at me, I turned into a positive. I went to a adult high school, graduated 4.0. I have 15 dual credits, and the degree I picked was criminal justice minor in business. Because my sister is about to have her doctors and be a dentist, the other one in education. But I am a Jukana. I'm a Juka. I was born on your soil. I thought that was a privilege. I thought being born on your soil when Bill Clinton said the natives trumped the United States government. I was in government class. I wanted to be in the Army, Air Force One, but I had to take care of my two beautiful sisters. I believe, don't leave no soldiers behind, but I believe in that American flag. All nations of God.
So thank you very much. She is Lawrence. Everyone deserves housing.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Danielle Davy. I'm a real estate attorney here in town, and I'm here tonight as the Governmental Affairs Director for the Lawrence Board of Realtors. First and foremost, the Lawrence Board of Realtors believes that safe and affordable housing should be available to every member of the Lawrence community. Notably, the comments tonight have all been about landlords and tenants. But the ordinance that's before you is significantly broader than rental properties. I'm not here this evening to express a policy preference, either in favor or in opposition to source of income protections as it relates to rentals. What I'm here is to express our concern about the broadness of this ordinance and how it applies to additional industries, including sales, including lending, as it relates to real estate. This goes far beyond what was studied and what was discussed at the Human Relations Commission and at the Affordable Housing Advisory Board. But the good news is that there's a relatively easy fix to this problem. Rather than simply adding source of income to every existing paragraph of Chapter 10, Section 3, without considering how it applies to each existing paragraph, the addition of a new paragraph tailored specifically to rental units could be added. This could provide the desired protection for tenants while eliminating many of the questions and concerns regarding the impact this ordinance would have on our real estate market. I've often asked you to consider incentivizing the behavior that you desire in past policy considerations. And I was disappointed to hear at the January 5 meeting that there had been no efforts to study or consider whether there might be options to incentivize and accordingly voluntarily bring landlords to the table in this discussion. There have been some good ideas thrown out since the discussion started with tax abatements and use of NRA funds, and those options deserve to be studied as well. So my ask for you tonight is to defer your vote and instruct staff to bring back a new ordinance with a new paragraph setting out the specific scope of source of income protection as it relates to rental units. And I did meet with Mr. Fidel and discuss that with him, and as I told him, I'm happy to help with that process if I can. And I would ask that you direct staff to research the availability of NRA funds, tax abatements, or other incentives that may be available to help alleviate some of the concerns and bring more people to the table voluntarily. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dani.
Thank you, Commissioner, for letting me be here today. My name's Eric Blum. Drawing a circle of 1,500 miles around Lawrence, I believe we don't have a single other instance of this type of ordinance being passed. It's been turned into a little bit of emotional plea, more so about a class that apparently I fall into, because I paid for 18 years to own my house. I've been in Douglas County my entire life, and all of a sudden, I owned two houses. And one of them came up for rental, and suddenly, I guess I'm a class. And now I should be discriminated against. And that's just how I'm understanding from having, don't discriminate, don't discriminate, but landlords bear the responsibility for putting everybody in a house. If anyone's overdosed, it's probably a landlord's fault. If there's any other type of wrong, let's just find a way to blame it on someone who lives in Lawrence and happens to own an extra house. It's their fault. This has, this has an ordinance that doesn't have anything more than a pointed, make a point. Airbnb, where does this fall if somebody has an Airbnb? How many Airbnbs are left open every day? Would we like to make an ordinance that actually says, if you don't fill your Airbnb every single night, we have someone from Burt Nash put them in that house that night? So that every house in this city has a body in it that night. We have a law that says three unrelated people can't live in a house. Maybe we decide that putting five people in a house would make everyone more safe if we gave more bodies doors to lock at night, and that's the goal. It does not mean that every single person deserves to have one individual house for themselves, regardless of income and any other type of stance. I did not know that I was wronging people by just trying to rent a house that I was fortunate enough to earn over 20 years. We have an ordinance in front of us that is set here with, it involves sales of homes. It's so broad and so, it has no point to understand what the consequences is. And we have corporations who are taking 200 apartment complexes. They have always been ones that use their ambiguity to discriminate and have no consequences. The guy who owns one extra house in this town did not suddenly become a bad person. I am a Lawrence person. I'm a Douglas County person, for my life. I feel like everyone is my neighbor, but yet, I was just told in the last couple of comments that I'm just basically different, because I happen to own a second house. I wanted to say I feel segregated out, and it just seems like, from people's point of view, they want this to happen to make people have homes. I don't see it being 2,000 landlords' responsibility. I feel like if there's Airbnb, let's figure out how it applies to that. Put people in those. If there is an open hotel room at night, you either rent it out by 10 o'clock, or someone goes in there for the house. Figure out any other way. Maybe a corporation has to pay. Thank you for your time.
Other public comment on this item? Other public comment from the audience?
So I promise I'll be quick. My name is Kyle Rogencamp. I work at the Ballard Center, and I would like to lend some more agency social service perspective to this issue. You know, at the Ballard Center, we are in the business of giving people that need hope, real hope. When people approach us, they don't have food. We've got food. They don't have clothes. We've got you. They don't have a utility on. We've got you. Maybe they're trying to get PFA from an abuser. We've got you. We've got systems in place. We've got partners in place. We've got relationships in place to where so many times we can give that real hope. Someone approaches us who is houseless with a voucher, my heart falls into my stomach, because we do not have the systems in place in this community to give that household the hope that they deserve. Now, that's bad for that family. It's also bad for Ballard. It's bad for every agency that you provide funding to. I'll note, we're not one of them right now. Please change that. It is 10 times harder to get someone housed with a voucher, if they have a job, than it is to keep someone housed, to keep their lights on. We spend so much of our resources trying to help people get housed. It is so hard. This has a domino effect on everything that you fund, on their time, on where they put their resources, and on the ultimate outcome for the community. This is a simple thing to pass. And for you landlords that have one or two properties, my name's Kyle. I'm with the Ballard Center. And if your tenants do get in a position where they need extra support, and you're worried about your income, I want you to call me. I want you to email me. And I want us to be a part of that solution, because we just don't work for your tenants. We work for this whole community. So we support the ordinance. We support the landlords that we've built relationships with over the years. We've made magic happen for households because of your willingness to work with us. Your relationship is important to me, but not as important at these protections for the people that need it. Sometimes you have to draw a line in the sand, so thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Kyle.
Hi, I'm Lilian Schrader. I'm a renter. I'm in support of passing this ordinance. I just have a couple of things to say. One thing I would like to point out and kind of put forward is that, I don't know if you noticed, but the landlords that have talked about accepting vouchers have had pretty positive experiences with it. There's a lot of concerns people have, but the ones that have actually worked with vouchers and people who have these vouchers have said it's been a positive experience. I also want to say that the main concern within Lawrence at the moment among tenants is not generally about these small landlords. It's about these big companies that come in and buy all this property and own all this property and don't really care about the community. And this ordinance, if this passes, this is a way to actually, like, hold them accountable in helping the community and housing people instead of just only being here to make money and leaving people homeless just because they don't want to accept a voucher. I'd also like to point out that, this has been discussed already, but it would also probably be good in the fact that there would be less money kind of just getting flushed out the toilet through the process of circling or of people with these vouchers getting denied application after application, and the, like, time and resources and people that work to get them these vouchers and work with them to get them housed. That funding, a lot of the time, comes through the city and through city-funded organizations, and so if they, if landlords actually had to accept these vouchers, that would not be such a long process, and they could actually use the funding that they have towards other things that are also important. So that's really all I have to say. Please pass the ordinance. We obviously have some problems with housing, I guess. I didn't prepare a lot. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other public comment from the audience on this item? If not, we will go to Zoom for public comment.
Shannon Alry.
Hi, my name is Shannon Alry. I'm the Executive Director of the Housing Authority. I just, obviously, we support this. We administer the, most likely, the largest voucher programs. We have about 900 vouchers. In no year do we have more than 10% to 15% change hands. So there was a comment made about a concern about the glut of vouchers and how will that be administered? The Housing Authority can absolutely administer every voucher that we have from HUD. We will accept any additional vouchers that HUD gives us, because the total that we're talking about is about 900 vouchers that we administer. I can't speak to some of the Rapid Reap Housing and some of the HSC's rent payments, but from the Housing Authority. The other comment that was made is that we don't pay regularly, and we don't enter into a contract. That is just false. We absolutely enter into a contract with the landlord. It's a partnership between the Housing Authority, the landlord, and the tenant. We pay our part of the rent. the tenant. We pay our part of the rent. There are very few instances per year of people who are terminated. It's a very serious thing. Everyone is given a due process hearing before that termination happens, so it is not an arbitrary thing. Housing Authority pays something on the order of $4.5 million to landlords in this town every year. We work with some really great landlords. I do not support the demonization of the landlords or the tenants. We work with both of those parties. All we're saying, all this ordinance is saying, make a determination about the tenant based on the tenant, not the fact that they have a voucher and that part of their income is coming from a government source. And finally, 70% of every voucher holder that works with the Housing Authority is elderly or disabled. So, the vast majority of the people you're talking about when you're demonizing these tenants has to do with elderly and disabled individuals. There's a place in our community for them. They should be able to rent from anybody in town. They are part of our community. I also just want to say that we are available if there are any specific questions from the commissioners about the program. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon.
Brandy Sutton.
Good evening, Commissioners. I think we need to look at the actual ordinance. We keep talking about vouchers. This ordinance doesn't cover just vouchers. It actually covers any form of housing assistance payment, including those that are emergency-only and temporary. In fact, during Gabby Boyle's presentation in November 22 of 2021, she even stated that landlords will have to accept every form of emergency assistance, even if it's temporary. It's difficult for a landlord to look and say, you've got 30 days worth of support. You've got Catholic charities giving you 60 days worth of support. This ordinance would require the landlord to accept that source of income. I know during the landlord meeting, during several of the other informal conversations I've had, the statement keeps coming up, this is just about sources of income. No, it's not. Take some time. Review the presentations that were made to HRC. Review the HRC agenda items. It is very clear that this is step one. If you look at the October 27, 2022 presentation with the HRC, there are several additional steps they wish to take, which include restricting application criteria, requiring inclusive screening that prohibits discrimination based simply on a credit score, which restricts the types of criminal history that you can use, restricts your ability to not rent to somebody based on prior evictions or prior bad references. Every one of the presentations made at HRC, or any of the information provided, say, this is the first step. So, while I agree we should be supporting the voucher system, this statute needs to be narrowed down and not be covering any type of emergency assistance. That is not going to be a long-term solution for landlords. Somebody comes in, Kira was a great example. They have six months of Kira. At the end of the six months, they're unable to pay their rent. Now, they're being evicted. Great, we've only further compounded the problem. They were forced to be accepted by a landlord. Now, they have an eviction on their record. They're never going to find housing again. This is going to be an ongoing problem. We need to narrow the statute down. We need to look at what Wichita is doing to incentivize landlords to voluntarily participate in this program. Forcing people to participate is not the answer. Forcing people to accept tenants with only emergency temporary assistance is not the solution. And I implore you to take a look at the bigger picture and the unintended consequences that this is going to have. Thank you.
Stremmle. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Mickey Stremmle. I'm a Realtor here with Keller Williams Integrity here in Lawrence, and I've been in the real estate industry for 30 years. And I'm here to directly talk about the ordinance as it affects the real estate and lender industry. And I know Daniel Davey has already addressed it, but also earlier when Zach mentioned that you all could add a amendment to this ordinance that would fix it. And I don't believe that's true, because as you've heard from other people that have talked about the ordinance directly, there's some conflicts in it. And I'm going to try to keep my comments brief, but there's a lot, there's a lot I could say, but I'm going to try to keep it brief. So, my understanding of the original intent of the ordinance was to make some changes to bring more rental vouchers into the system to try to get people into housing. And I believe that's a really good, good thought process. But where the confusion begins is just by the word of the use "income." If I were to say the word "income," probably 90% of you would think of something like a paycheck. A paycheck is taxed and is claimed on a person's income tax returns. That's how the word is used in the real estate world for the buying and selling of homes. Typically, homes are sold with cash or a loan. HUD, who oversees loan programs, specifically Fannie and Freddie Mac, say that only taxable income can be used to qualify a person for a loan. And depending on many other factors, some people may not even qualify for that loan. The word "income," as you all are trying to apply it to this ordinance, means rental voucher. A rental voucher can only be used to supplement rental payments. This creates in this ordinance two specifically different definitions of the word. You can see where this ordinance can start becoming confusing just by reading it. And I will use this paragraph discussing the marketing, which is Section 10-111.2, to make my example clear. There are many circumstances where Realtors and lenders may need to market the properties away or to certain buyers. If a Realtor or seller isn't allowed to describe the kind of financing that's available for a specific home, they actually be called out for false advertising. You cannot apply every loan type to every home. Examples could be, like the USDA loan program. It's great for first-time home buyers, but it only can be used in the small towns around Lawrence. It cannot be used within the city limits of Lawrence. If FHA or VA buyer wants to buy a home that's in poor condition, they can't. If a home is flooded or full of mold, you only can get a remodeling loan or pay cash. There's a lot more circumstances here, but I think you understand where I'm trying to go with this. So, a Realtor or lender needs the ability to inform a buyer if a certain type of loan is available for a certain type of home. Specifically, if a layperson were to read this ordinance in writing, they may assume...
Thank you, Mickey. Mickey, you're out of time. I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Are you kidding me?
All right.
Ten minutes. Bye.
Jonathan Oliva.
Hello. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
My name is Jonathan Oliva. I live here in Lawrence. I'm here to support this ordinance. I've heard a lot of, you know, complaints from landlords about they need more incentives and stuff like that. Fact of the matter is, you guys have the incentive, and you guys have plenty of incentives. You guys have assets, whereas maybe people that you are renting to do not have these assets. And you mentioned that, yeah, you guys are taking a risk. That's the point. You know, I don't go into the casino, bet it all on black, and then cry whenever things don't go my way. You know, I think a big problem is as well, people have mentioned this, that a large majority of the housing stock in town is owned by large corporations, 70% about roughly, according to, you know, the studies. And one thing that I think was glossed over, one gentleman last week mentioned pretty implicitly that if this ordinance were to pass, that those major corporations would simply raise their rents to be out of range for this voucher system. That would likely raise rents all over town. And I mean, that's, that's a pretty good, it's a pretty good analog, or I guess, reason to implement either rent controls, you know. But I think that some of these smaller landlords, I think their problem is with the bigger landlords and not the actual tenants, right? Lawrence is a top 10 destination for tech. This battery factory is going up just outside of town. Property values are only going to go up, which means that tax rates are also only going to go up. And one way we can mitigate that is by raising developer rates, so that, developer fees, so that the developers that are coming in to access our markets, access our housing, access our infrastructure, are paying more on the front end, and our people who live here, renters, landlords, are not paying so much on the back end. A gentleman also mentioned that all the Airbnb, empty housing, and that's true, there's over 1,000 empty homes on Airbnb. One thing that could rectify that is a vacancy tax. And I think a lot of these smaller landlords would do well to look into these things that would affect the larger landlords versus, you know, squabbling over small tenants when it's the large landlords that are in fact the main problem that they're, that they're facing. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Nathan Enz.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Hopefully, you can hear me. I'd like to start off by saying I'm opposed to this ordinance. I understand we're trying to find ways to make housing more affordable in Lawrence, but it seems this ordinance is only going to make housing less affordable for the vast majority of Lawrence renters. From the January 5 meeting, the common message was that this ordinance will drive rents up to offset risk, and investment in this community could suffer. In short, this ordinance will increase rents even more on top of the increases that were expected due to property tax hikes and the ever-increasing cost of labor and supplies. I agree, this ordinance could increase the property availability for voucher recipients, but at what cost? All renters should expect a rent increase because of this ordinance? This seems contrary to the goal of the city, to ensure affordable housing for all. To me, it seems the next step is determine why landlords don't want to participate in the existing program. I've not heard any city staff partnership with landlords or property managers to get to the bottom of this. City staff have consistently said they don't know why landlords aren't interested. I'd recommend the staff engage the landlord and property management community to get an underlying reasons and concerns of what's going on here. Through that, I think the city, landlords, and property managers can partner and find good solutions to encourage involvement in the existing program, minimize concerns, and most importantly, don't force people to take on additional responsibilities and risks if they don't want to. This path would seem to be a way to ensure more available properties for voucher recipients while minimizing rental increases for the remainder of renters. This ordinance will require more time and effort in the form of additional and more frequent inspections, contracts, documentation of rental analysis, accounting reconciliation, additional conversations with city officials, and more coordination with my current team I use to manage my properties. All of these new activities are not equitable in time, effort, or cost to my current processes. Additionally, while the city says voucher recipients are the same as all other renters, I agree with the concerns consistently raised around the increased risks in the ability to recoup costs that are in excess of security deposits. Additionally, some sources of income are not equitable in timelines. I've accepted Kira assistance in two occasions. In the first instance, I had to cover six months of mortgage expenses before the funds were released by Kira. In the second instance, I had to cover four months of expenses. I think most reasonable people would agree it is not equitable to say funding that comes several months late is the same thing. I'd propose this ordinance is voted down, and the city staff move beyond the academic studies and start the real work with our local landlords and property managers to come up with the right solution for Lawrence. City staff have research articles on how source of income has worked in other communities, but until the local experts are engaged, we can't know if it's successful here. The articles may be peer-reviewed, but when it comes to social sciences, there's still a fair amount of uncertainty. Lawrence residents can behave differently than previously seen in other parts of the U.S., such as Oregon and Washington. The research seems to indicate that worked there. It didn't say anything where it would claim it worked everywhere else.
Thank you, Nathan. Thank you.
You're on mute, Gabby.
Of course. Off to a strong start. Good evening, everybody. My name is Gabby Boyle. I'm making this comment representing only my personal views as a member of the community. With any significant policy change, there's going to be a host of speculative concerns, but a lot of these concerns are just that, speculative. While this ordinance would be new to Lawrence, it is not a new idea. We're not the first community by far to pass this. Again, over 100 municipalities, including the state of Oklahoma, the state of Wisconsin, the state of Minnesota, the state of North Dakota, as well as cities identified by Lawrence as peer cities, Ann Arbor, Michigan, Boulder, Colorado, Austin, Texas, Stillwater, Oklahoma, Norman, Oklahoma, and Athens, Ohio are just a few examples of similar cities and states that have passed this type of ordinance with great success. Additionally, I would like to highlight a few pieces of research that have been included in the 400-page packet you all have received. I appreciate the commenter Brandy shouting out the research that I've been doing for the last two years on this topic. So, in that research, there are, there's evidence that refutes the claim that these policies overregulate the housing market and drive up rent prices. That idea has not been backed by evidence. There is no evidence of a relationship between source of income policies and a community's average rental cost. And in fact, there's evidence to suggest that landlords overcharge housing choice voucher recipients in communities with no source of income protections, and that's in the T-Catch and ME 2017 study, as well as the Taylor McKay 2021 study. Additionally, assumptions about risk when it comes to tenants with housing choice vouchers, including property damage as well as financial risk, do not bear out in research. When those are investigated, there is no reliable evidence about tenant quality, housing outcomes, or financial outcomes. Instead, these perceptions are based on stereotypes about low-income and BIPOC residents, and that is Dear 1992, Pendle 1999, Takahashi 1997, Teak 2010 and 2012. And then finally, voluntary incentives are not enough. We've had incentives at the Housing Authority for a couple of years, multiple financial incentive programs actually, and our voucher utilization rates have dropped. In states that have passed these ordinances alongside mitigation funds, those mitigation funds are rarely used, which suggests that there is not an increased risk of damage or financial loss. A lot of the language being used by folks in opposition to this ordinance spoke in terms of protecting an investment. What is an investment to the 2,000 landlords in Lawrence is a home to over 50,000 people in Lawrence, including myself, 54% of the population. Housing should be a human right. It should not be a nest egg, and everybody in the community, especially those with additional privilege, should be responsible for creating a better future for everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabby.
Dana Ortiz.
Thank you very much. I will make my comments short because a lot has been discussed tonight so far. Dana Ortiz with Family Promise of Lawrence. Family Promise serves about 300 families every year, and we encourage and require, in some cases, an application to the Housing Authority for vouchers for all the families that would qualify. That voucher application process is rigorous, and it's intense, and it takes a great deal of commitment and, and organization and such, and it's much more thorough than most rental applications. So, when somebody gets an award of a voucher, it's really something to celebrate. However, then that family with voucher in hand has a three-month period to find a rental unit to where to place that voucher. And I cannot tell you, more often than not, we're going back to the Housing Authority asking for an extension on behalf of the family because they haven't been able to find a unit that will accept their voucher. I don't really understand what all the miscommunication is and such with the 11-plus years I've been in this role. This is not new, but it has gotten more and more and more severe as of late. And, and when a family has voucher in hand, again, those we serve have children. The children that we serve, 50% of them are under the age of five. You've heard over and over again, housing is a human right. It's also healthcare, which we saw clearly during this pandemic, and it is the road to stabilization. So, I just would like to encourage you all to pass this ordinance. The Housing Authority has been very creative with their incentivizing and their programs and decreasing the risk, and this only works with a great partnership with our landlords. And our local landlords are often the most willing to work with the voucher program. So, thank you very much for your time and for consideration of this, of this ordinance.
Thank you, Dana.
Mary El Ferro.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening, commissioners. I hope you can hear me. My name is Mariel Ferreto. I am speaking today as the landlord liaison for the Lawrence Douglas County Housing Authority. As my executive director Shannon Ory stated, we're more than happy to answer questions, should you have any, when it gets to your discussion. What I would like to make public comment on today, there has been a lot of question that has been brought up about around incentive programming and having that opportunity for landlords in addition to either this ordinance or any sort of policy change. My position began about a year and a half ago in July of 2021, I think. And we had, and the Housing Authority has worked very, very hard for a number of years to bring this position to the community because we did see the need of engagement and intentional partnership with our landlords. I think many folks who are experts in this field, who have lived experience in this field, have seen the writing on the wall for several years that we are, you know, kind of barreling towards a housing crisis and a need for not only more housing, but more support from as many partners as we can fathom. And so my position was created to just do exactly that, and I have been working very hard and with other agencies and with the staff at the Housing Authority to make our agency more accessible and more equitable, not only to our participants in the voucher program, but to landlords. So along with my position, we introduced the landlord incentive program through the ESG CV funding, which was a grant fund. That particular fund was geared towards housing folks who are experiencing homelessness and helping support landlords financially and through case management to have the opportunity to house a voucher recipient or somebody who is receiving another type of rental assistance, to house them, providing a lease-up bonus, providing security deposit, providing damage mitigation funding. So that has existed in our community for over a year and a half. I know Wichita was mentioned quite a bit. They barely started their program this year. We have been working on this program. I fully obligated the first round of ESG incentive fundings within the last year and it granted another $75,000 to continue that program. LDCHDA saw the need to continue and broaden the incentive programs. So we invested our own funding of additional $50,000 to broaden the scope, to do incentive funding in the form of bonuses for signing on voucher recipients and damage mitigation to lessen that worry of risk or damage for the landlord. So that's another additional $50,000 that will pertain to any.
Thank you, Mario. Appreciate your thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kelly MacIver.
Hi. I'm Kelly MacIver and I'm a landlord and I'm not against this. And even if I would have liked an earlier heads up, maybe some more time for discussion, including landlords, tenants, and realtors. And I would like to ask you to consider taking more time to make it less broad as the three different realtors brought up. So if you could defer your vote for some finessing, that'd be great, but bottom line, I'm voicing support for this. All of the letters you received in support of it kind of says it all, which has included landlords, tenants, and especially includes those who run the support programs. And all the contact that I have had with those support programs at Housing Authority, Family Promise, Burton Nash has been positive. Not without occasional bumps, but positive. And those folks are working really hard to get things done for all parties. And in terms of the potential hit any landlord might take, as we do with anyone we rent to, which reminds me, we're assured that we're still able to run credit reports as part of our criteria. So we still have criteria that can be met, but that potential hit with a less-than-stellar tenant, while not all landlords are wealthy, is absolutely true, and some of us have smaller profit margins than others, but we can afford to own property while still building equity with our property ownership. And as Kirby indicated early on, worst-case scenario, if something really went downhill, which can happen with any kind of tenant, I might slip down a road. And the more likely scenario, we're all probably going to end up with the same mix of tenants we get now. Some great, some not so great, because it's the human race. Commissioners, if you can defer to finesse this ordinance further, that'd be really nice. But ultimately, it does need to pass so our fellow human beings can stop being discriminated against for their source of income. Thank you.
Maddie Bell.
Hi, I'm Maddie Bell. I use names and pronouns. I, a lot of good points have been made. I'm in favor of passing this ordinance and I'm in favor of passing it tonight. Particularly because Lawrence is, you know, we talk a lot about Lawrence being unique in Kansas. And a number of times, the state legislature has targeted human rights and equity policy that we've been attempting and also environmental policy to prevent it. And the legislature is in session right now. So if this is something you're interested in, I would, I, I'm in favor of passing it tonight. I'm not a person who's generally in favor of urgency for urgency's sake, but this could be a window that closes. I just want to, you know, emphasize again the, that, as Kelly just did, that like, it's great when someone has had the financial opportunity to buy another home, but that home, like that home being a rented property is going to be a home that someone else doesn't have the opportunity to access. Nothing against someone who's doing that, but it's not, it's not going to be homelessness if you, you know, can't make that mortgage payment for the additional home. Yeah, that's kind of all I have to say. So thank you.
Thank you, Maddie. Any other comments on Zoom?
That's all the comments there.
All right, we'll bring it back to the commission and we'll take a 10-minute break and we'll be back then. Okay, we're, we're back from the break. So now we will bring it back to the commission for discussion on this item. Who would like to start?
I have a question maybe for Shannon. Shannon and Mario, the Housing Authority. Just a couple.
You're unmuted there, Brad.
I am.
I got it.
No, I'm muted. It says I'm muted.
I just did it.
Oh, okay. That's my fault. Sorry. The incentive, if this ordinance passes, is the incentive program still continuing?
Yes. And we have funding a little over $100,000 to use until we run out of funding. And then our MTW program for the $50,000 that I mentioned, that's called the Landlord Partnership Program. We'd hopefully renew that on an annual basis as a continuing program. So the, the idea is to continue to have mitigation funding and lease-up bonus funding for landlords to participate.
And I, I know we've, we've lost voucher holders in this last year, but how many outstanding vouchers do we have that are people looking for units? And how is that compared to, you know, the last year or two?
Sure. Shannon, I can take this one unless you want to.
Go ahead.
From the last number provided, it was around 70 households that have vouchers on the street right now. And that number is typically within the 20s or 30s on a monthly basis. So we are seeing quite an increase in households who have vouchers in their hand who are actively looking.
And the, the flip side of that is, I think Shannon said earlier, you have 900 vouchers, but at any given time, we're talking of all the, the properties in town, it'd be, at this point, 70 people looking, correct?
That's correct.
I did see a concern about, I know generally speaking, if someone applies for a voucher, there's a, there's a delay in, you know, getting, getting the process done and all that, and typically it's a fairly short one. I know there's some concern about, you know, in the August timeframe when there's a lot of turnover. What is the typical turnaround in that August timeframe when there's a lot of units being turned over?
So Shannon Ory, so how we handle that is we have two regular inspectors. We also have two additional people who are certified to be an HQS inspector, including the director of that department and our capital fund coordinator. And so we put more. And so we put more manpower, person power into that in the August, July-August inspection. Because really, it starts in July. And those are our busiest months in the normal turnover period for a college town.
And in those months, what's your typical turnaround?
Well, all of it, as dictated by HUD, has to be done within three hundred and sixty-five days of the prior year's inspection. So we do it all within that month. I mean, and we do it early in the month in case it doesn't pass so that we have the opportunity to do additional inspections to make sure it passes.
That makes sure I'm clear. If I'm a landlord who's accepted, and not been in the program, I accept somebody, how long between I say, yes, I'll win to you, and the person's able to move in and stop collecting rent? Or does the rent go back to the first day even if they're not in there yet?
No, the rent will only apply if they're in the unit. And generally speaking, we try to do it in the month prior to when they're moving in. So we would try to do the inspections in July if they're moving in August one.
We also, and I just like to speak very highly of our department who does the inspections, is they are great communicators with our landlords. If it's a new unit and a new landlord coming onto the program, we offer courtesy inspections ahead of that initial one. So if an interested landlord would like to have their unit looked at, it's a free service. We can schedule that and have them look and say, hey, this would pass, or this, you know, this is what you need to work on ahead of even getting somebody interested in the unit. So we do offer that. And then I have seen our inspectors go above and beyond for our landlords. So if we need a fast turnaround timeframe inspection, they're very good. Now those busy times we'll work with. But typically, you know, I've seen a very quick response time. So that also differs from housing authority to housing authority. But I think I pride our agency on being very quick to respond and working with landlords and ensuring that that potential of having a vacant unit is minimized as much as possible.
Thank you. I have a question for staff on another issue.
Go ahead.
Anyone had questions for them before?
Yeah.
And it was asked a little bit about earlier by Commissioner Littlejohn on the cash sale and the fix. I mean, what have you looked at that? And what do you see? I mean, I know there was one alternative to separate a whole nother paragraph. Are there other fixes you've looked at? Where do you add on that?
Commissioner, yes, there are other potential fixes. If, okay, so this ordinance addresses both the sale and rental. Most of the conversation is focused on the rental. There are potential reasons for including the sale, including down payment assistance. If the Commission wanted to exclude the real estate portion of this, I think there are a few substitutions that you could not make the changes to not include Source of Income and proceed with the rest of the ordinance as it is. There has been the suggestion of adding additional language. And that's certainly something I can look into and come back to as well.
Thank you.
In that regard, I know I just had a question. This is for staff or whoever wants to answer it as well. I know a couple of folks had mentioned further incentives. And I know the mayor had mentioned NRAs or any, you know, sort of incentives like that. If we went ahead and pursued that, would that, could we do that concurrently with also if we chose to go ahead and pass this ordinance? Or I'm wondering if it would hold us up at all? Or is it something where we can go ahead and pass this ordinance and then go ahead and, you know, look into those incentives post that?
Sure, Commissioner, if you wanted to pass this ordinance and then bring, you know, direct staff to look at incentive programs, that's certainly something we could bring back to you.
I had a question for our first conferee. I'm sorry, it's been a long time and I can't remember your name. And I wanted to call you Saint Patrick's Day Queen, but that is not your name. Instead of me butchering it, I'm manifesting it for you. I caught part of your comment in regards to documentation that you received. Could you go back and explain a little bit more explicitly to me what it was that you had concerns with? That's my first question or my first statement. Then my second question, well, second statement, which is a question, is at any time, did you reach out to the Housing Stabilization Collaborative to kind of talk to them about the documents that you received and how it created a conflict? I think you said it created a conflict. I just didn't hear what the conflict was.
Yes, so specifically, I received a paper from the HSC. And I think Gabby Sprague, just on record, I think Gabby Sprague is one of the most amazing individuals Douglas County could ever have. She's an advocate in all aspects to keeping people housed, and that's also my job. So I really do appreciate her. I have one job, and it's to follow what my broker says, and he's really scary. He scares the living leap out of me. So he has trained me to operate under a system where if somebody's race, somebody's somebody's race, somebody's gender, anything is specified that comes across my desk, if I see a paper that defines these things, I can no longer accept them. So that's my real estate broker training. And that is the compass that I govern my business off of. If there's something in the paperwork that I cannot comply with, I cannot accept the paperwork. So the additional paperwork, I have two examples of something that came from the Housing Stabilization Collaborative. And it states that the, there's, it states the gender. It states, it states race. It states all the things that are against what my belief is for housing, and it should not have come across my desk. My landlords, they don't know what my tenants look like. They don't know who my tenants are. They don't know them by name. I know them by heart. I know them by name. I know who they are. And I do advocate to keep people housed. So with all that being said, I cannot legally, I do not believe that I can accept the HSC voucher as so when you use the word voucher, I cannot accept that paperwork unless I derive it to direct payment to the tenants. Then we don't care who helps you pay your, we don't care who helps you pay the bill. As long as the bill gets paid at the end of the day, we'd love to keep you housed, especially if you went through all that work to get that voucher in place. But the voucher has to go directly to the tenant. And the other problem that I ran into was there is so many vouchers out there. So there's the CARE voucher, which is the Kansas Emergency Rental Assistance, it's a federal voucher. Then there is the Housing Authority voucher, which I love the women. I love everybody that works at housing. I have not had, I think, Mariel, I think you are one of the biggest gifts to Douglas County, Kansas. And Shannon, I just, I think that she's a gift. But I can't fill out paperwork that's against my belief system and advocate for my tenants the way that I'm supposed to because my landlords, they don't know them. So when you send something to maybe an out-of-state investor who is dealing with a special needs trust that is creating wealth for their special needs child or whatever have you, when you send something across that could create a discriminatory action, I cannot pass it forward. It's against my belief system. I will not operate under those provisions as a real estate broker, as a representative of McGrew in my personal work, and then as a property manager, I can't do it. So I'm asking you guys to please consider revising the, revising how it's written because right now it's so vast, whether it's for sales of properties, like Danny Davies said, or whether it's for rental properties. Because I believe in the voucher system. I accept Section Eight housing vouchers. I do not accept vouchers that paperwork comes across my office that I can no longer comply and work in what I decide is my boundaries for my business because I have, I have an honor to uphold and not fair housing as a licensed real estate agent.
Okay, so a couple of things. Point of clarity, CARE was a state program that utilized federal dollars, and that program has since died. So anybody that has a thought about CARE, that program doesn't exist, money's gone. But we do have organizations such as the Housing Stabilization Collaborative that does provide housing assistance, you know, in the form of supportive funds, voucher, however you want to call it. I guess my question is, one, if Gabby Sprague is still here or home or?
I don't see her, but I can tell you I did.
Yeah, I think she's here. Yeah, she's here. I'm going to ask Gabby my question. So Gabby, my follow-up question was, it sounds like there's some prohibiting or cautious language on whatever the document is that relates to the person's voucher. Is there any way that that language can be removed? Is there a reason why that language is on there? Could you just add some context to that piece?
So I want to stipulate that rental assistance is not a voucher, and these are separate things. But the part that Emily is talking about is the HSC demographic information. So that's an internal document, and the landlord does see that on, as a part of the process. But it's not something they have to act upon or even retain for their records. They can delete that if they so choose. I also want to note that I can change the process. I don't have to include those things. It's something we're kind of working through as we're changing from DocuSign to Adobe Sign for our e-document purposes. So I want to stipulate that no decisions have to be made on behalf of the landlord regarding that assistance based off of people's demographic information. That's their choice, not mine. And we can change the process too, so people don't see that.
So Gabby, can I ask her a quick question? Because Gabby, you said this is not a housing voucher. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, well, if this is not a housing voucher, and at no time will it be, I think that the county can work on their process. I think that having a real estate agent involved, whether it be people on the committee having, when you're talking about fair housing, that input is so important because it's something that we are required to follow by our ethics. And if we don't, if we don't have, if there's not enough of a definition of what a housing voucher is, then one can assume that there's paperwork that may be against what we can operate under. And Gabby knows, I respect her with all my heart, and I know she's done incredible things for our community and kept people I deeply care about housed. So I want you to hear me say that. It's just the process and defining what voucher specifically means is so important for our city and for our county and for the residents, for the tenants, for the landlords, for anybody involved with the process. So I please beg you to revise, revise it.
Thank you. Gabby, thank you. I think I had a couple of line-by-line, I don't want to say line-by-line questions. I think it'll come up in discussion and.
Would you like to see a copy?
I don't see it. I don't. I don't. I have a question for Danny. In the section that was brought up with unlawful, unlawful housing, real estate property practices. So I know Source of Income was amended in as it related to the protective classes that triggered some issues that we've talked, that we've heard about tonight along the cash-only sales. And I know that the HRC has shared concerns with some aspects of that. I know you spoke to the, maybe perhaps having a whole nother section. Could you speak a little bit more to what the section, new section could provide that would mitigate what was done in these amendments?
Sure. So I guess from the, from the real estate sales perspective, ten dash one eleven point one, point two, and point three are sort of the three paragraphs that I'm primarily looking at because that deals with sales, that deals with the advertising of properties for sale, and that deals with the terms and conditions of a sale. So all of that is going into negotiation over the sale of a property. What I would propose as a way to sort of eliminate some of the questions and some of the reach into the sales side of that is, you know, create a new paragraph. Maybe you put it as a new point four. And use a lot of that similar language. So it shall be an unlawful housing, real property practice for any person to refuse to rent or make available with regard to any housing, real property available for rent. Or to discriminate in the terms of conditions of a lease agreement or a rental agreement. And isolate those protections into a rental paragraph where you would still have rentals in paragraphs one, two, and three as it applies to race, sex, religion, all those fair housing classifications that we already have. But a new paragraph, you could isolate Source of Income as it relates to rentals because that's what we're hearing all the comments about. It's all landlords and tenants and protecting tenants. And if that is really what the city wants to do in terms of providing that protection, I think we have an opportunity to clarify that and just get rid of a lot of the muddy waters into how this relates to sales and lending. And I mean, there's some other paragraphs later that deal with participation in multiple listing service and real estate brokers organizations. I don't think that that's what's intended. And so I would just, again, I suggest backing the Source of Income language out of the existing paragraphs and creating a new targeted paragraph to accomplish what you want to accomplish.
So on the issue of, in that section, as it relates to home loan programs, we've heard a couple of people toss around FHA and Sally and Freddie and different defined terms and whatnot. How does including Source of Income as it relates to home loan programs create a unintended consequence? Or as I hear it, I've heard several people say that it's almost like an unintended consequence. So I guess I'm just trying to understand by including Source of Income as it relates to home loan programs, is it because it's not related to rentals that we kind of want to steer away from it? Or is it that they're actually could trigger an unintended consequence if we include Source of Income as it relates to home loan programs?
So I guess first and foremost, I am not an expert in all of the various lending programs out there. And this would be an excellent question that a subject matter expert in all of these different lending programs should be asked about. But, I mean, the terms are going to be different in a real estate transaction if you're talking about an FHA loan versus a VA loan versus, you know, a typical bank loan. There's going to be, you know, certain loans won't accept a gift from parents or borrowed money as down payment as a part of that loan process. So each of those programs is going to have different requirements, some of which implicate Source of Income. Again, I'm not an expert.
That's fine.
But I just, I think there's a lot of opportunity for having such a broad ordinance to get into some of those very specific regulations and create those unintended consequences.
Is, do we have anybody here representing HRC?
Hi, good evening. Katie Barnett with the Human Relations Commission.
Katie, when you, when you were doing the work with, with the Gabbys and others around this ordinance, as it relates to the real estate piece, what was, what was some of the information you perhaps researched or received consultation on as it related to the real estate piece? I know we've been focusing heavy onto access to rentals. But I just wanted to know if there was any specific or anything you remember from the four hundred pages or just conversations you were having with individuals from other municipalities about the real estate piece that you can speak to or provide context for?
Sure, this is Katie Barnett. Yes, so I think the biggest concern with this is that the federal home loan programs would be is that the federal home loan programs would be, if that paragraph, if, if everything was stricken from real estate advertising, financing home loans was just moved to a, a separate paragraph to be just, source of income shall not be considered in rental transactions. I think that we're going to miss out on a lot of issues that have to do with home loan programs, just as you said, commissioner sellers. And so that's, that was the primary concern that we looked at. Also, after this concern was brought up before, I did go through and look at every single state and city that I have on our list on the 400-page packet. Every other state and city does include real estate transactions. And I've reached out to a few municipalities and haven't heard back. But it's my presumption that the reason that they don't only apply in other communities to rental transactions is very specifically because it would then prohibit home loan programs toward down payments. So that's really all that I know about it. And as Danny said, we could certainly talk to more people. But it would put us certainly in the minority of communities or the single us out of restricting real estate transactions. And I don't, I don't know what the consequences are because every other community that has this includes real estate transactions. So.
Any other questions, Mayor?
Any other discussion on this? Anybody?
I hate to rely on you because you're an attorney or an attorney. You are not our attorney, Commissioner. But did you have a preference when thinking about this as a conflict? Either adding a paragraph or removing it from certain areas? Or, or did you at all?
I don't. I mean, I, I haven't looked at it close enough to know what the right answer is to that. I mean, you know, I, I do have the concerns that Danny brought up and, but I also, I mean, I, I do, I did look at, you know, quite a few other states, you know? I mean, there are 19 states and 104 cities that have this. And I've looked at not all of them, but some of them, and they, and some of them have real estate. But not, not all of them have all the paragraphs we have. And that's where it gets a little tricky. I mean, well, each of the paragraphs, the marketing ones, not every state has one on marketing. It has real estate transactions, but we have some very specific ones. But many states do, some do. I mean, Katie's right on that. So I don't, I don't have the right answer to that. But the, the exact right answer is no.
Well, I'm definitely, I'm definitely interested in trying to narrow that down so we can avoid those potential unintended consequences that could come with that. When it, and when it comes to sales or cash sales that was brought up, I think. So, and obviously, since I'm not an attorney, I would rely on our staff to, to help us out with that. Anybody else interested in that?
Well, it's, just from my perspective, given what the Commissioner Finkel died said, I think there is an opportunity to. But I would, I would more or less leave it up to our, our legal staff to kind of, I would like to, for us to adhere to and follow municipalities that, you know, are similar to us, either in size or what have you or demographic, you know, if there's, because from what Commissioner Finkel died said, there's a wide spectrum. So now granted, I don't think it would preclude me from, you know, deciding on the ordinance itself. I, I think that from what Zach said, it could be something that, you know, can be done concurrently. So.
Anybody else thoughts on that particular part of it?
If we, I'm just that if we want to, we want to have a good plan for how we want to find that out in terms of communication between the staff and, and what staff specifically needs to understand from us. And the timeline, I think, is also important. So those would be the things I would want to understand.
Yeah, I think that we also get a consensus or thoughts from the commission if they want to move forward with something like that, with that direction to staff. Anybody wants to move forward with that direction?
What, I'm missing what you're saying?
Yeah, just the, the direction that I was talking about was when I indicated I'm interested in trying to find the legal language that would, would potentially close or, or narrow that in regards to sales, cash sales, real estate transactions in that, in that respect. So is there anybody else on the commission that would like to have our staff attorneys look at that? And provide that amendment?
Yes, I would. I mean, I want to get that, get that right as relates to cash sales and, and, and the real estate industry. I mean, the sale industry.
Yeah, the transactions, real estate.
There's ways to do it. And again, lots of people have done it. I just don't have the answer sitting here.
Um, I just, sorry, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
I just had a quick question for Zach. So if we didn't do any of that, you know, ask you to do that and just straight approved it, went forward with it, would, what would be the procedure after that? Would you just send something or what would happen after that?
So if you pass the ordinance on a second reading tonight, it would become published and it would become effective as law once is published.
Okay.
At that point, there could be future amendments that come back. Whatever your preferences there, but it would be effective as law as soon as it's published the way it's written right now.
Okay. But we could come back with future amendments to it and like changes if, if needed be.
Correct.
Or we could amend it tonight and send it back to staff. You, we could amend it tonight.
They said to send it to legal, so.
We could ask for that amendment tonight before it passes or as part of the passing.
Sure, yes.
It doesn't have, since this is second reading, if we ask for this amendment, it's okay to have that as part of the second reading. It doesn't need another reading after that?
It just wouldn't be passed on second reading tonight. So it will be paused until the amendments come back. And it would remain on second reading until you take action.
Great. Okay.
I got a, I got a quick question for Katie. Katie, are you still on?
This is Katie Barnett. I am.
Hey, Katie. I know that in last year, the HRC talked about doing more to educate and familiarize the tenant community around their rights, tenant rights to housing. And just with, at least that was just one piece or one aspect of your subcommittee's work. Would, do you believe that the HR, that the HRC can handle the task of working with staff and community partners to do, if the ordinance was to pass, if or when, I'll just keep all bases covered. If and when, if or when the ordinance passes with the HRC, do you believe you can take on the charge of working with partners to do additional engagement or education with landlords? Because I know that's come up several times throughout this entire process. I think it's unfortunate that our landlords and our community don't have a coalition that provides at least a centralized way to communicate and so that it's not individual. There's at least a, a coalition, an agency that, or organization that one can go through. But do you believe that, that's something that you, your commission would be interested in crafting that out or at least looking into that?
Yeah, this is Katie Barnett. So of course, any part of what happens here this evening or in the near future would include a public outreach and public education. There's no way that we could expect such a change or shift in policy and procedure to happen overnight. And, you know, as Zach said, published and effective, that sounds really scary to try and roll this out so fast. I think that the Human Relations Commission, I know for sure, has a dedicated subcommittee for public outreach. And they, everyone on the Human Relations Commission has really been waiting for our next charge, for next steps regarding this ordinance. The Chapter 10 Subcommittee worked really hard on this. But at some point in the process, you know, the writing and the research is done, and then the rollout has to happen. And like I said, we have an entire subcommittee of four, three to four commissioners that would have the capacity to work on the rollout and public education of this. So to answer your question, long story short, yes, absolutely. The Human Relations Commission would have the capacity to do that. Of course, alongside other community partners like the Housing Authority.
Okay.
So, oh, go ahead. I was just going to follow up with that real quick. So are you saying that, I guess maybe what I heard you said is having an effective date that's later down the road so that you could educate, get ready for the process before it went into effect?
This is Katie Barnett. Yes, certainly. You know, there would have to be, we have a complaint form. But I think in all practical sense, you have to say, and I think some people brought up points of there has just been so much confusion regarding what is discrimination, what is a voucher? There is consistent misunderstanding of landlords being forced to accept vouchers. And so a public education campaign would be a tremendous asset to this community in making sure that this process is smooth if the commission were to vote this ordinance into effect. And so, yes, absolutely, working alongside the Housing Authority. I think some procedural points were brought up just this evening about what happens when a voucher holder gets accepted, but the landlord or property has not been through the Housing Authority and HUD inspection. What happens during the, that, that time period? Do they hold the unit open for a day or so, or the 48 hours, or however long it takes for the Housing Authority to get over and inspect it? And, and that takes training. It takes training for everyone. It will take training for the HRC inspectors or investigator. It'll take training from the Lawrence Douglas County Housing Authority for the landlords. So yes, I believe that public education and outreach is critical if this were to pass. And the Human Relations Commission absolutely has a dedicated subcommittee for that.
I guess maybe I'll follow it up. Looking at Zach or Tony here, not all of this falls on the HRC, obviously. It falls on staff and, and, and enforcement mechanisms to, to your, your department. What's your thought on a, if it is, if it does pass on a, on a, on a a date in the future which it becomes effective as opposed to upon publication?
Well, I think that would be a wise move. Because as Katie said, I think there is an opportunity for training for a lot of sectors in the community. If that is the direction of the commission, we will certainly make that a priority. And I think it's very important that city staff be involved in that in enforcing local laws. So I think we should be very much a part of that public engagement that the Human Relations Commission wants to do. So we'd love to work closely with them if that is the, the direction of the commission and, and have a delayed effective date.
So I'm gonna try again to muddy us through this. First, I, I mean, one, I, I do believe that this is a, this is going to be a wonderful step for our community. We've heard a lot of people talk about equity and inclusion. This speaks, I think the biggest pieces it speaks to is inclusion as it relates to leveling the playing field. And when I think of inclusion, I think of access, access to resources, access to opportunities, access to hope. But that's all predicated on one's ability to navigate to those resources and to be able to use those resources effectively and efficiently to have their success. And what we've heard here tonight, while there's been some, I think, odd conflation of housing assistance, HUD vouchers, in that sense, in that sense, we've also seen some high level. I, I don't want to say conflation, but some high level shared relationships as it relates to our homeless community, our unhoused community as it relates to resources and access to those resources, those who are seeking affordable or access to housing. And when we talk about that three-legged bar stool, I, we talk about it in my world as it relates to early care. You can talk about it for housing as well. When you talk about availability, affordability, and accessibility, that's all predicated on inclusion and one's be, ability to navigate and to use those. And so any way we can add a variable to make someone successful, that's a win for our community. And we have to look at it that way. If not, we are continuously, we're using our un, we're using conscious as well as unconscious biases to prevent people from being successful in our community. And essentially what we're telling them is they're, they're not, they don't belong here. And that's huge. So I do support this ordinance. We have some angst around the real estate piece, which is an unintended consequence that maybe we didn't see, or I, I didn't see it coming. Because again, I'm not a subject matter expert in real estate. I know a few friends and some of them say that a holiday end. But I think what I'm hearing from the commission, and I get it, wanting to have that time to defer it. I hate to see this being deferred, but for the sake of this piece, I would not, I would not be opposed to deferring this to no later than February 14th. We have discussion on immigration status coming back on Chapter 10. That gives us like items that we can vote on. So I say we defer this until February 14th. Give staff time to work with the HRC, to work with individuals in the community, our community partners, whether it's the Housing Authority, Board of Realtors, to get folks at the plate that have had a vested, a vested interest in wanting to work out that real estate piece. And it comes back to us on the 14th and we can finally vote on it.
I, I would ask also the commission, do we need to discuss as far as when the, if it passes, when it would actually go into effect? Because we talked about possibly delaying that after the vote. Is there any thoughts on that with the commission in order for the, the education piece to happen?
I, I would, I would ask Katie what, what her preference or what, what her opinion would be on that as well, if she's still available as far as the education piece.
This is Katie Barnett. I really echo what Tony said. When you look at the rollout of something like this, it would take a significant amount of time. You know, I don't know what the city's capacity is to change a website and publish mailers and do the training that it would take. I don't know what the Lawrence Douglas County Housing Authority is, capacity is to do the training. I think we all want this to get done swiftly. But I would say, obviously, as soon as possible. And our commission, the Human Relations Commission, will meet in early February is our next meeting. And so we will have the ability to, you know, introduce this idea and put it on the lap of the, our public outreach subcommittee. But I would really love to see this considered with the, you know, cash-based sales exclusion and some other language added or removed or, you know, whatever edits the, we all need to make this successful. And in the meantime, start working on a public education campaign. So I, I hope that answer is clear. Is that what you were looking for, Commissioner Littlejohn?
That's about as close as you can give me, I think. So, thank you. I appreciate it.
So I, I would just go back to, do we want to set a timeframe for the, for the actual enforcement of this where it goes into effect? Do we want to set a timeframe for that once it's gone through a second reading? If it passes, six months, three months?
Well, I guess, I'm interested in that. But if we're deferring it anyway, I'd say let's, let staff and, and the HRC and Housing Authority come back with a recommendation on that. I mean, I don't want to speak for them about the, to not. I mean, I don't wanna speak for them about the, tonight, I mean, especially if it's coming back anyway, we don't need to make that decision tonight. I think they look at that and bring that back to us at the same time.
That's right. That's what I was, I was hoping somebody, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that and make sure. So staff, do you have Zach and Tony? Do you have enough information on this?
Mayor, for, for clarification, um, can you state one more time the limited scope of the amendments you would like? I guess the question I have is, is, would you still like real estate transactions to be included and, and fall under these protections, but a carve-out for cash-based sales and that kind of confusion? Or is this, uh, removing the real estate section, um, from this ordinance?
I, I would like to see the, for sure, the cash out piece pulled out in the real estate, um, transaction part. I'm not as clear on that. I'll, I'll be honest with you. I'm not as clear at that. And I would hope that we could get some assistance from our real estate, um, partners out there that, um, whether or not we could have unintended consequences if we continue to leave that in, the, the real estate transactions as a whole. So I would like to have that looked at to see if that's also something that we need to look at towards an unintended consequences. Okay. That's.
Yeah, I would agree because.
That clears mind.
Because it seems like, uh, Commissioner Sellers was, um, mentioning the, uh, the loan portion of it. So the cash bail, cash-based sale part of it would be fine with me.
Yeah.
But, you know, following what the mayor said, more investigation on the.
Yeah. Is there anybody, other Commissioner, we need at least three of us to move forward with that? You okay with that?
Yeah.
Anybody else? Okay. Is that good? Thank you. Got it? All right. Again, we're good to go on this. Thank you, everybody, for, for being here tonight and providing great input and, um, look forward to getting this piece done. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to Commission items. Does any Commissioner have any Commission items they wanna talk about tonight?
I do briefly, but I'll wait till the crowd dies down.
Good for you guys.
Yeah, seems like.
How many overtimes?
Just one.
Yeah, overtime case, state one.
Okay, now that everybody who was in the game has left. Just wanted to quickly, just wanted to point out as a, just a point of information that today is, um, National Day of Racial Healing, um, several, um, members of the Exec Board of NBC Leo, which is the National Black Caucus of Local Elected Officials, are highlighting this across their communities. Um, some communities have done this for many years. This is the seventh, um, year, um, that National Day of Racial Healing has been recognized. Um, it started out as an initiative with the WK Kellogg Foundation and their efforts around truth, racial healing, and transformation. And so the idea is to, um, convene as a community to, um, discuss and understand the importance and acknowledging of a city's racial history, to apologize to those who have been directly impacted, to atone for the harm done, and enact policies that will improve outcomes for all members of your community moving forward. And I couldn't think of, you know, tonight's, I think, events, um, truly speak to what our community is, hopefully by policy, wishing to atone so that our policy and our behaviors, um, truly align with each other, um, in that piece. And so, um, National Day of Racial Healing always occurs today after, um, Dr. King's, uh, birthday. And so to, I, the quote that I have for this evening, or a quote that I posted on behalf of, uh, today's observance, um, is from Audrey Lord, and it says, "It is not our differences that divide us. It is our inability to recognize, accept, and celebrate those differences." So this is not a somber moment. This is a moment for us to look at having those critical and crucial conversations like we've been having for the last few months around housing, access to housing, opportunities for economic prosperity and security for all in our community, and what that really means as policymakers of this governing board, and what that means as community members. And how do we do this work? How do we do this difficult work together? And not just do it, but, uh, but to learn and to build and create new behaviors, positive behaviors around it. So wanted to share that with everyone this evening on behalf of NBC Leo. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Commission items?
Oh, I have one more Commission item. No, it's future agenda items. I, nevermind.
Okay. All right. So then we're on to the City Managers Report. Craig?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, there's four items on here, the future agenda items we always talk about. Um, I wanted to highlight the utility billing report. That's one that you, you're used to seeing here as well. And then also shine a light on the Enterprise Resource Planning Update. So it's, it's a little boring, but it was so, an unbelievable effort that went well. And it's not, hopefully, if it's not noticeable to very many people, that's because it went so well, and so many people worked so hard to get it to that place. We still have one more major element to put, to, uh, put in place. But to give you some idea, um, there's many staff members in our administrative team, but throughout all of our departments, who we just didn't see for weeks at a time because they were so involved in making sure all of our systems and financials and data transition from one very old dated system to another one. So these aren't the things that get much attention, but this had Herculean effort, and it was done so well by so many people. So I just wanted to kind of make you aware of that, that good work. I'm excited to get a lot of these people back. They still have work to do, but to get a lot of them back to help us with our work. So, um, if we've been a little, um, a little slow on getting around to some things administratively, it's largely because we had some awesome people doing some really hard work. So I wanted to celebrate that.
Thank you.
Um, and then to, um, the Parks and Recreation Department's fee increases, um, update. Um, I think Derek's available to answer any questions, but, um, in summary, this is an outline of the, um, of the recommendation that, uh, went through the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and the Task Force that worked on this, on this process. We received a lot of public feedback, the Park and Recreation Board did. Um, and it culminated in, um, stopping short of our budgeted, um, target of 1.2 million that we discussed and, and adopted in the budget process by, um, adopting a series of increases in fees throughout, uh, hundreds, if not thousands, of the various, um, activities that Parks and Recreation offers to our community. The, um, one of the main takeaways that I think we saw from the data was the two or three years during the pandemic, we saw a decline in participation, a decline in what we offered in programs. We also kept our fees, uh, quite low, or actually reduced them in some cases so that people could, um, get back to accessing them as quickly as possible. Obviously, it had big revenue implications. We did not continue what we normally do and kind of keep up with pace of, um, increases in cost of living or the other things that impact our, um, our fees. And this is getting us back on that track with some of these fee adoptions. We still have a larger gap than we, um, budgeted, and we were gonna have to work on that as a community, be working with you and bringing back, um, ideas on continuing to work on that. Uh, one of the things that was discussed and, and is not being, uh, adopted is an entrance fee to our recreation facilities. It obviously got a lot of attention from people, and it's, it would be a break from, um, a long tradition. But it is something that has been put on the table a number of times, and, um, so we listened and didn't, uh, decide to move forward with that this time. Derek's here in case you have any other questions, but, uh, wanted to give you an update on that important community conversation and administratively and budget, um, impact that we expect.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commission on that? None? You do? No.
Not yet.
Then we'll ask, um, to send it out to the audience. Are there any comments from the audience? I know we've had a few folks here tonight, has been here for the course. We appreciate your patience and glad to have you here now.
Okay, uh, good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. I'm Patrick Norman. I'm with, uh, Ad Astra Aquatics. We're a not-for-profit, uh, swim team that rents from the City of Lawrence. Uh, we've been doing so for 12 years. I'm here to make it clear that, uh, over the past decade, we've tried to rent additional space, um, from the city aquatics facilities, um, and have regularly been denied, um, at renting additional space. Um, and for more than a decade, we've been told that it's not about the money. Um, and have requested to rent more space, yet now it does seem to be about the money. We estimate that our team alone could have helped recoup a significant portion of what was in the report, the 25,000 annual patron goal without price increases. I gave a document and I sent it to everybody today. We just need to have the opportunity to rent space and to run swim meets. I wanna be clear that we have requested to rent empty, unused lane space. Um, I estimate that probably on a given night, there's probably two to four empty lanes, um, that we could rent each night. As a major stakeholder, uh, partner to the City of Lawrence, and, uh, as a competitive swim team and a contributor to aquatics revenue, we're disappointed in the communication of this increase. Public involvement is lacking, especially with, uh, major stakeholders like ourselves. A one-month notice with such a drastic increase in rental prices is tough for our organization. Um, we understand that, that the need for price increases, especially with, uh, present times. But all of it at once seems mismanaged and hurtful for youth swim teams in Lawrence. It's just poor customer service. If we are teaching kids and partnering with the City of Lawrence, um, families can only budget so much, and the city needs to be sensitive to that. Um, it's hard to pass these increases, um, on, uh, on such a short notice. We run on a fiscal year that runs from, uh, August through September, so we've done our budgeting. We believe teams, uh, swim teams are a little bit different. Uh, we rent six to seven days a week, year-round, except for holidays. This is different than a sports team renting a court on a field a couple nights a week for a few nights a month. Um, there's one pool to rent from in town. That's it. Our team garners a, a, a large respect. Um, we have nearly 1,000 swimmers that have gone through our program, 130 swimmers on our team. Um, we just don't think that these price increases are gonna get, uh, for, get the results that you're looking for. My questions are, will swimming become more of an exclusive sport because of these prices? And, uh, will it become more dangerous? Are we gonna have to rent less space and cram 12 swimmers into a lane or something like that? So. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Patrick.
My name is Lisa Jones, and I'm with the Lawrence Aquahawks. I'm a board member with them and a previous president. And yeah, I found out about this meeting at 12 today, so I didn't really get to prepare too much, but I didn't really know I was gonna have three hours here either. So, um, I agree with everything Patrick said. We have Lawrence Aquahawks and Ad Astra are the two swimming teams in town. We work together to work with the city. The Aquahawks has been working, um, in this town since 1968. So we've had a relationship this whole time, and like you said, we got the document today saying about the rate increases. To pass that along to our families, a 30% increase in the, the lane fees is outrageous. This is an increase every day of $25 to $50. That's a lot. We swim six days a week, um, unless we have meets. And so that's a huge increase. Um, and like Patrick said, our, our budgets go from August to September, and we've already kind of figured this out for the year, and we can't really change it in the middle of the year. Um, I get an increase. I mean, the pools closed during COVID, that had our enrollment down, that messed us all up. We had to rent more lanes because we had to spread our kids out. We paid a lot during that time just to keep everybody safe. And I get, it needs to be an increase, but 30% seems a little pricey, um, to kind of put it on the swim team's backs. And then, yeah, really, to give our families two weeks' notice to be like, sorry, everything's increasing, um, is a lot for them. I guess that's all I have to say, and I hope you get everything together for February 14th. Thank you, Lisa.
Good evening. Uh, Kelby Marsh, uh, Westside Lawrence. Uh, I have a daughter that swims with Ad Astra. Um, we've been with Patrick and Katie for the better part of a decade already, and she's only 12. I just wanna say, we travel a lot with swimming, so we were just in Iowa this weekend, and Patrick's team sent eight swimmers to compete in an all-star event up there, right? I mean, so he produces results, and, and, and being able to grow and continue to have that kind of success in the team, we have to have lane space, we have to have adequate lane space, we have to be able to bring people in. And as a parent that's been doing this, I'm very fortunate to be able to afford my daughter the opportunity. But it is, it is very, I mean, with any travel sport, you, you, there's lots of overhead, and there's lots of time, there's lots of costs that go into it. So as, um, I can also say that, um, for the most part, swimming is not inclusive. Um, it is a very privileged, um, sport that we, we function in. And so to Patrick's point, how do we continue to try to bring new athletes into this environment? Teach them the benefit. It's team, it's individual, it's competitive, and provide a life skill. Swimming's a lifetime sport. It's not something that you shouldn't stop doing, or there's not opportunities for you to continue to do that. So as a parent of a swimmer, as a resident of Lawrence, as someone that has been and out of the aquatic center for the better part of the last 10 years, the thing that I really miss is hosting meets here. Prior to COVID, we would have meets where we would have 600-plus swimmers in town. So you can imagine all of the revenue and the hotels and everything that we're filling up for those weekends, that, that's all gone away. So all of that development around Bauer Brook and the hotels that have been built out there, those were always full. The restaurants around were always jam-packed in between sessions. So just keeping in mind the weekend activities from swim meets that we have not had in town now for the, for three years, all of those things have gone away as well, in addition to bringing additional overhead to us as, as families and as the team. So I thank you for your time. This is my first Commission meeting. I found the whole night fascinating. So I'm, I'm pleased to stand up in front of you and, and speak a little bit. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Kel. Any other public comment on this, on the City Managers Report? Anybody on Zoom?
No, Mayor. Oh, sorry. Uh, Holly Ortell. Holly Ortell?
Maybe not. No? Okay. We'll bring it back up here. She might come on in a minute. Any other, any other comments on this, or discussion on the City Manager Report?
I guess I'd be interested in hearing from Derek, if he's on, about those issues you just said about.
Hi, Derek Rogers, Director of Parks and Recreation. You know, we have limited water space in Lawrence, and lifeguards have been challenging. And obviously, uh, to, uh, Patrick and Colby's point, um, COVID did not help us out, especially with indoor sports and the pools. Swimming, like a lot of sports, um, you know, initially, it's one of the values of the community. And with our cost recovery and our subsidy model, we want all the kids to learn how to swim. As they progress in individual sports, um, the cost recovery and the subsidy changes. One of the things that we did do, if you look at the aquatics and look at the fees, that we raised the admission fee roughly 20, 20%, and some of the other fees, uh, for example, um, spoken to by Aquahawks and Quade, um, went up 30%. We did review the fees. We went around to all our programs to include, um, all the sports. And, yeah, as you can imagine, most people aren't really excited about, um, fee raises. And yeah, as you can imagine, most people aren't really excited about um fee raises in our community, whether you're a golfer or you play soccer or individual sports and recreation or basketball or volleyball. But it is something that we took very seriously when we reviewed. We uh had a task force. We've had two meetings with our Parks and Recreation Advisory Boards from December and a meeting in uh January. We're waiting to get the results back, which came in, I think it was around January 9th, I think, the advisory board. So it's pretty recent. Um, we adopted their recommendations on the, the fees after listening to the public comment. Really, the discussion began early last summer when we were uh working working with the commission and as a city on uh trying to close our budgetary gap for, for 2023. And that's where we had proposed the fee increases. Uh, we continue to work with the teams and limited water is something to think about when we talk about extra lane rentals. You've got Aquahawks, Ad Astra, you have the Master Swim Program. Uh, they did come and speak at our advisory board. And then you still have the high school teams, LHS and Free State High School, along with our community members that uh like to utilize the lane lanes for swimming. Um, so we try to balance that out. Um, we will review the aquatics and look at it closer. Um, and we will get with uh Lori. We have read Patrick's email and that's some items that we can discuss.
Well, one follow-up on that and I'm, I'm glad you don't look at it. What, what about the um changes that are preventing the, the holding of swim meets?
I'll have to review that because I am not aware of that, so I'll have to get with staff. I, I get it during COVID, but I'm not sure of anything at my level. Uh, Lindsay's on. I don't know if she knows of any, anything that I'm not aware of on swim meets.
Lindsay Hart, Assistant Director. Uh, I, I will follow up with staff and check on that. Again, I think we had made some changes during the pandemic. And over the last few years, I know it's, you know, it's been a slow process coming, coming back to normal and getting back into the routines that we had before. So again, this is the first I've heard of this as well. And I'd be happy to follow up with, with our swim teams, with these user groups. We, you know, we understand the importance uh that they have for us and our facilities and we definitely want to be good partners. So uh, we can definitely look into that.
Hey. Is it, got that, Bren?
Um, I got, um, I'm, I'm glad you got the email, Derek. I know you were a C-SO, but I, I did find kind of the math on some of this compelling, so I'll appreciate you looking at it. And, and, and I agree, I've been there too and, and I, I understand we need to leave some public space open, but then I've also been there when there's just lanes that are open that could be being used, which is a really interesting point uh by these groups. So it seems like there might be a way to be more efficient with that. Um, I, I understand it might be sort of as needed or um not knowing who is or isn't using it in any given moment, but it seems like there might be some um, um problem solving there. Um, it's sort of like having an, an empty apartment that someone's not using. It's, it's something that generates income and so let's try to use them when we can. And I, I appreciate you um pledging to look at this because um there's a case here to be made that they could maybe be generating more income. Thank you.
All right, uh, just one item on the future agenda items. Um, I had discussed last week the possibility of having a discussion um here about what other communities, communities are doing regarding the NRAs, um potential incentives. So I didn't see it on the future agenda items. Is that something that we're going to put on there? Had brought it up in commission items.
Yeah, I, we, yeah, we said yes and we will. I, I don't know that we'll always capture everything on the future agenda items, but, but that was not forgotten.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on the City Managers Report? Not?
I did. I had it. Um, I know that we discussed having the utility staff come back in regards to the um discounted utilities program. I didn't, if you could just provide an update on when staff think that they would be available to give that presentation or if it's going to be on the TBD anytime, that's all. I just wanted to update on future discussion on that, because I know it was supposed to come back to us.
You bet. Some of those people I was referring to earlier, um, that, that's them.
Okay.
So we'll, they're, they're available again.
Gotcha. Wonderful.
Okay. Okay, anyway, that's it on City Manager Report. No last for a Commissioner calendar. We're down to that. Anything on the calendar we need to be aware of or um need to add? We're good? Okay. I'm gonna ask for an adjournment. I'll move. Um, got a first and a second on my favor. Aye?
Aye.
Nay. Ours, four to one. Two weeks in a row. Have a good night, everyone.
I, I'd like to present if we had a chance, um, anyone?